Planning Commission make a recommendation to municipal council. The items that do not have an asterisk are items we will be making decisions on. And before we get started, we will have a prayer by Ms. Ellsworth and pledge of allegiance by Mr. Rowan.
Our dear kind Father in heaven, we're grateful for this opportunity to meet together and to talk about these issues in our community. We're thankful that we live in Provo in such a wonderful place. We're grateful for the snow that we've received, and we're thankful for those who volunteer for our city, especially those serving for the police force and in fire. Please help us to make sound decisions, to consider all the stakeholders here, and to be compassionate and thoughtful. And we say this in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will start with roll call of the commissioners, starting on my left with Mr. Knudsen, and please state your name and whether you have a conflict of interest with any items this evening.
My name is Robert Knudsen, and I have no conflict of interest.
Andrew Howard, no conflicts.
Dave Anderson, no conflicts.
Deborah Johnson, no conflicts.
Jamin Rowan, no conflicts.
Shannon Ellsworth, no conflicts.
Russell Phillips, no conflict.
Thank you, commissioners. All right, item number one.
Madam Chair, before we go to that, it may be well to point out that items two, seven, and eleven are going to be continued, and that those won't be discussed at all. So if any member of the public is here for items two, seven, or eleven, those will be on a future Planning Commission agenda. We haven't set the date for those items yet.
Thank you, Mr. Pepperoni.
You're welcome.
All right, item one, which is legislative in nature, so we will be making a recommendation to municipal council. Angela Eckstein requests.
Area Center of Parents.
Angela Eckstein requests a zone change from residential agricultural RA to R 1.8 for 0.96 acres located at 1356 South 500 West. This is in the Lakewood neighborhood, and Mr. Ardmore will present item one.
Thank you. So just getting the area here, you can see I-15 freeway in Lakewood neighborhood here. This piece is really just an infill development. Here's a zoom in of the proposed subdivision that would go along with this zone change. So the zone currently is residential agricultural zone, which wouldn't allow the subdivision to occur. There's a current home here. The rest of the property is just undeveloped lot. So the request to go to R 1.8 zone allows the applicant to get a use out of the rear of her property and create these two new single-family lots. And it also allows the city to finish out this radii and this street here with the curb and gutter and sidewalk. Like I say, it's infill development. Steph's reviewed it for compliance with R 1.8 standards. It meets all those regulations. It's not enough development to have any effect on our, to have a great effect on the sewer capacity in the area. So that wasn't an issue either. So we've proposed that this move forward to the council with a positive recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Ardmore. Commissioners, any questions for Steph? Ms. Ellsworth?
When you say that this radii will be completed, does that include a curb, gutter, and sidewalk to the lot just south of this?
That's a good question. That would have to be addressed by Public Works. I don't know if they're going to continue it on that far.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Steph? Mr. Howard?
Pierce, the middle carve-out is a flag lot. Is there any city comments about where we are with flag lots?
Flag lots are permitted in the city. There's different regulations for those, and that meets all of those. With this piece of property, there wasn't really any other layout to make best use of it.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for staff commissioners? Mr. Phillips?
Just one item. I just was making sure that we were keeping informed to our, to the west side development plan that we had of, of the R-zone area now. Is that, we are?
Yeah, this is in conformance with the west side plan.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'd like to invite the applicant, Angela Eckstein, to come forward. And please state your name for the record.
Hi, my name is Angela Eckstein. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to make this request tonight. Erin did a great job presenting what you can see. I just want to add to the puzzle a little bit that this property, we bought about 14 years ago for the intention of having animals on it, and then a few years after we bought it, irrigation was discontinued to our part of Provo, which made this land much harder to have animals on. And about that same time, we had a bad delivery of hay, which had some foxtails in it. And foxtails, without a good crop being watered around it, kind of take over everything, and they did. So the property has a lot of foxtails on it, and the only way to do that, to kill it, is to bring in a new crop with a lot of water, culinary water at this point, or to raise the whole thing. Another piece of the puzzle that makes this a little less feasible as the existing RA zone, I brought some pictures for you, and our lovely secretary over there is going to help me out with that. I thought you might like to see what it looks like down there. So you notice that this is the property immediately to the south, and mine starts where the fence is. And you can see how far out in the road it goes out. There's only room for about two cars to pass, and cars frequently park on that sidewalk for church services, for the LDS church that starts right where the tree is on the side, the left side here. So there's really, it produces a pretty tight squeeze for cars, and I find it to be a little bit dangerous, because on the next slide, you'll see how far out it comes in the road. The sidewalk is on the bottom of this picture, and that is where the sidewalk ends. Nice little nod there. And so that's why I'm trying to do this, it is jutting out so far. We did another one, and the next one. You can see as well, because the road is not finished, it presents a dangerous corner for cars in the winter. In fact, you can see how many times it appears someone has plowed through my fence. I've given up building the fence on this property, because people just plow right through it every time we have a snowstorm. So really, it's become unfeasible for the purpose it was designed for. It's an RA property, which means we just have animals on it, but the animals have the danger of the foxtails, you know, horses and foxtails are a bad combination. We can't keep a fence up there. So the neighborhood kids like to play on the property in the winter and in the summer, and with cars plowing the fence, that makes me feel unsafe. My kids walk through the pasture to get to their bus stop, and on snowy mornings with cars, again, that makes me a little concerned that, you know, someone's going to plow through my fence and hit my kids, and I don't want that to happen. So these are kind of the big reasons I'm doing it. The neighborhood, in our neighborhood meeting, expressed that they would like to see the sidewalks finished on this road, and if my property is done with the sidewalks, which I obviously would have to put in if we got approval to do this, then the next, there's only one small segment left that Provo City actually owns on my neighbor's property, and if that were finished, then sidewalks would be complete in the neighborhood, causing a much safer neighborhood. And the other thing that was brought up in our neighborhood meeting with concerns for the neighbor is we live down in southwest Provo where the Osprey development went in, and they put in these giant, like, three-story homes. And my neighborhoods were concerned that I might do the same thing. And under the direction of my neighborhood chair, she kindly walked the property with me and expressed the concerns. We agreed that the houses most suited for the property would be, you know, ground level or two stories, like, are already there, but that basements wouldn't be appropriate. And we found out that the sewer in that neighborhood in this process is only four feet deep. So basements are really not a possibility anyway. So I feel like that concern my neighbors brought up is no longer relevant to this. Otherwise, they talked about ground elevations and drainage, and Mr. Jones in engineering's addressed both of those things on our plans. And so I feel like we've sufficiently addressed neighborhood concerns on this property. And so I think it's a pretty straightforward, it needs to be done. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Any questions for Busepstein? No, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, at this time, I will open the discussion to public comment. Are there any neighborhood chairs present who would like to address item one? And please state your name for the record.
Becky Bogdan, Lakewood neighborhood chair. Okay, so a couple of things. The neighbor to the south, as long as she doesn't have to pay for anything, she's okay with that back being done, but if she has to pay for anything, she's not all right with that. The flag lot is a concern for some of the citizens within the Lakewood neighborhood. They feel like it's, especially the one neighbor feels like it's just kind of in his space. And so that is a concern for him. Also, you know, she did address the height and the sewer issue. Well, she said that there's, it's a four-foot sewer. Over on six south and about 1600 west, in order to meet the sewer, they did have to bring in quite a bit of fill. So they're still six or seven feet up, and that would be a concern. If engineering does come back and say, okay, you have to go up so high in order to hit that sewer connection, that would be another concern of ours. But she's right, basements are an issue because they're not considered a story. And so down there where they have to start out at an elevation that's already higher than where our existing neighborhood is, that's where we get those huge three-story houses in Osprey that already start out quite a bit higher than what the existing neighborhood is. So that is always a concern, is with the groundwater issues and with the issues down in southwest Provo, these homes are, if they put basements in, then that's that much more fill that they have to bring in, making it that much higher. And it's making the height of the homes that much taller in the neighborhood. Also, we discussed with Angela in the back, currently around that neighborhood, there is no planter strip. I know currently with engineering, they have this, what is it, six, seven-foot planter strip with the six-foot sidewalk. These are like three- or four-foot sidewalks. And so in order to do that, it's just going to be kind of weird. The neighborhood, in the neighborhood meeting, voted that we're okay if engineering goes ahead and just gets rid of the planter strip and just allows her to build the sidewalk around it. I know ADA regulations require the six-foot sidewalk, but in speaking with engineering, in order to do that, they're going to have to taper it out and taper it back in. And so my feeling is, is if they just go ahead, if they can legally, I don't know what the legal stipulations are, if they can just go ahead and let that be uniform with the rest of it, I think that would be best, just for the plain fact that this is just about the only property without that uniformity. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Bogdan? No, thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to address item one? Are there any members of the public who would like to address item one? Would the applicant like to then address any of the concerns expressed by the neighborhood chair?
Becky mentioned my neighbor to the south might have a concern. I actually walked the property with him and showed him kind of my vision of where I put the house and whatnot and the heights. And he emailed her and me and said that he had no concerns with this, and he was perfectly fine with it. In terms of the planter strip, engineering has already worked with me on that, and it will be a six-foot sidewalk, but we have already scoped out and made the flanges and everything. So, and otherwise, with heights, Shane Jones said that with the height of the property, the elevation that currently is, that we should be fine with just the slab, that it shouldn't need any buildup. So I don't see any concerns here.
Thank you.
Can I ask you one more question? So I think I missed your, how you addressed the concern about the three-story homes. What is it that you're saying or offering that will limit it to one or two stories? What's the, are you building, do you plan on developing the homes yourselves and then selling them, or?
I would love to develop them myself and live in them. That plan's a little up in the air right now, but, so I don't know much about, like, pre-development agreements or anything, but I did talk with Becky, and we did discuss that the houses would be not built up like the Osprey ones, that they would be similar to the houses already there, which already have a slightly submerged basement in their two-story homes. And so were I developing them, that is what I would do, is I wouldn't push the neighborhood. I like my neighborhood. I don't want to cause any contention. If I were to sell them, I don't know how that goes into place. I don't know that process well enough.
Yeah. So if it's a standard subdivision, we're not going to have a separate development agreement, then staff would recommend that we at least have a note on the final plat that addresses this issue of building height and a restriction that it goes beyond that of the zoning ordinance, so that as people buy these lots, they're aware of this height limitation, and the city can enforce that.
That sounds reasonable to me.
So is that something that we would need to include tonight in the motion, would you recommend, or is that, would that happen at a later date where we recommend a note on the final plat?
Because it's been discussed and it's been agreed to, we'll just put that in our conditions and make sure that that's done. So whether or not you put it as a, as a part of your motion, staff's going to follow up on that and do that anyway.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Fantastic, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then the discussion is closed to public comment at this time. We'll turn it back over to the planning commissioners for a motion or further discussion. Item one.
Madam Chairman, it seems very consistent with the way the west side is headed. I don't have an objection with the plan.
Thank you, Mr. Howard.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Mr. Rowan?
Okay, a move that we recommend, that Angela Eckstein's request for a zone change from residential agriculture, residential agricultural to R 1.8 for 0.96 acres located at 1356 South 500 West in Lakewood neighborhood, that we forward a positive recommendation to the municipal council, and just include in my recommendation as a condition that a note be made on the final plat, that the structures built on that property not exceed two stories.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council for item one?
Aye.
Aye.
Any post? All right, that was unanimous. We will forward a positive recommendation to municipal council on item one. Okay, the next three items, I'm going to read in together. They're all related. Affiliated with these, I think you, all the commissioners should have a copy of a letter with a cover memo from Mr. Mills. So this will be items three, four, and five. Items three and four are legislative. Item five is administrative. Okay, item three, Irv Eastham requests a general plan amendment from public facilities, PF, to residential R zoning to allow six townhomes in a proposed LDR zone. The subject property is located at 862 East Quail Valley Drive and includes 0.78 acres in the Edgemont neighborhood. And item four related, Irv Eastham requests a zone change from public facilities to low-density residential for 0.78 acres located at 862 East Quail Valley Drive in the Edgemont neighborhood. And then the final item that is associated with this is item five, Irv Eastham requests concept plan approval for a six-unit townhome development, subject to approval of a proposed low-density residential zone at 862 East Quail Valley Drive in the Edgemont neighborhood. And Mr. Mills will present all three items.
Thank you very much. So just to kind of orient planning commissioners and the public here, the subject site is on the, on the screen, it's outlined in green. Just to the west of this site is the Tempe View Seminary Building, associated with Tempe View High School. And then just to the east of this building is a, is an existing office building that is currently utilized by some, some groups that are kind of incubator-type situation onsite only. For the, for the sake of the planning commission, I'm going to go through a bit of history on this site. I think it might be a little bit longer than usual, but I think it will be helpful. So from the research that I have been able to do, the, the site that we're talking about tonight, the 0.78 site, and also the, the office building site, for a number of years were owned by the same entity. Two different parcels, I did all the research that I could find. They were separate parcels beginning in about the 1960s. I think prior to that, they were conjoined as one parcel, but then sometime in the 1960s, they were subdivided into two, but always owned by the same entity. The existing site is undeveloped. There are no associated uses with this site, and has not been developed. There have been many, many plans for development for this site, but nothing has ever been brought forward to be approved or anything like that. The, we held a neighborhood meeting, and there are many, many people here from the surrounding neighborhoods that I'm sure will be able to supply some additional information and things like that. But we held a neighborhood meeting on January 15th, 2019, at Edgemont Elementary School. The primary concern of neighbors that I was able to see, and I've had some association with this property for a few years now in different projects, throughout the years, the neighborhood has been burdened by some of the uses that have gone into that office building, that have created some traffic issues and impacts. They have also created some parking impacts and issues, and the primary concern is what any additional development of this site might exacerbate that, that situation. And I'll let, I'll let the neighborhood chairs and the members of the public further explain their concerns and things like that. But that was the primary thing that I was able to, to understand from that meeting. So what the applicant is proposing at this time is, they would like to develop the site with a six-unit townhome development. And in order to do that, we need to, the general plan amendment needs to occur as well as a zone change for the site. Currently, the general plan designation for the, the site is public facilities. The current zoning for the site is also public facilities. This is one rare, rare time when the general plan designation language is exactly the same as our zoning code language for the site. Customarily, that's not the same. Customarily, there's like a residential designation on the general plan map, and then in our zoning map, there could be many different types of residential zoning. But this time, they're actually the same. So what the applicant is proposing is that we change the general plan designation for the property to residential, and then the proposed zoning designation for the site would be low-density residential, which would allow the townhome development to go on that site. Staff was able to, let me just go through a couple more slides. This is a site plan, a proposed site plan for the project. Just as a perfunctory review, there, there will probably need to be a couple changes to this, but each unit is a three-bedroom, two-bath unit with an attached two-car garage. And then the applicant is also proposing additional off-street parking on the site to help with some of the concerns that were raised by the neighborhood. These are some proposed elevations. This will, this project, if it were This will this project, if it were approved, would also need to come back for a project plan approval in order to go through that and go through the designer view process and things like that. But this is the preliminary plan that the applicant has proposed with elevations and floor plans showing what their intention is on this plan. Staff was able to review the requirements for a general plan amendment as well as a zone change. We felt that overall, the request did meet the requirements that the ordinance sets forth for both of those things. I just want to highlight, though, a couple different a couple different parts of the staff report. The the staff reports are actually quite similar for each one because it's so related. But staff acknowledges the concerns of the neighborhood regarding parking, safety, and congestion. It appears that the existing impacts are related to separate issues from the proposed amendment and project. Staff believes the impacts will not be further aggravated by the proposal to develop the property with townhouses because the proposed development is more than able to meet the requirements of the proposed LDR zone. However, it is incumbent upon the applicant to show that the proposed zone change and subsequent development of the property with townhomes and residential uses will not create a negative cumulative effect on the already burdened neighborhood and that this should be incorporated as a condition of approval. So our staff's recommendation is to recommend approval of the proposed general plan amendment, the proposed zone change, and also to approve the the concept plan. We have some specific conditions that we're also recommending in association with that to to address hopefully some of the issues that have been brought up and will be brought up. First of all, we recommended that all CRC comments are adequately resolved prior to building permit approval of any proposed development. Number two relates to what I was just talking about. The applicant shall demonstrate graphically and empirically that the proposed zone change and subsequent development of the of the property with townhomes will not create a negative cumulative effect on the already burdened neighborhood. And number three, if development permits for the proposed site are not approved within three years from the date of the approval, the zoning designation and the general plan designation will revert back to what they already are. So essentially, it's a sunset clause that if for some reason the developer isn't able to to do this project, that it's not in perpetuity rezoned and re-designated, that it will revert back to what it currently is if it becomes infeasible for them to do this project. We primarily our reasoning for recommending approval on this project are twofold. One, we felt that the residential designation actually provides more protection to a neighborhood than the current PF zone. The current PF zone and both the general plan designation and the zoning designation actually allows some some permitted uses that are probably not at all conducive to a neighborhood, much more egregious than a residential type of situation. And rezoning, redesignating the the property to a residential designation on the on the general plan as well as providing a residential zoning actually guarantees that only residential uses can be developed on that property instead of some of the other permitted ones that would be allowed.
Can you give us some examples?
Some that I was reading through, there are like some, I think there were some trash storage type of uses, things that are not necessarily innocuous to a neighborhood, but aren't quite industrial, but are more regulated to something that would benefit a community rather than just a residential neighborhood. A school is a is a public facility, commonly designated. But then there are some others. I think Mr. Pepperoni is looking it up for me.
So something like a maintenance yard, for example?
Maintenance yard, things like that. Yeah. And and those are the types of uses actually that the applicant, the owner, could go and implement without any sort of additional legislative or administrative approval. So we just felt that it would provide additional protection to the neighborhood to rezone it and to re-designate it. And so that was one primary reason that we wanted to do that. And then also, we felt that by doing this, it it actually conforms more to what the goals and policies of our general plan currently have in it, that we're providing a range of housing types in many of our different neighborhoods. That's been in our general plan for a long, long time. And that's something that we hear constantly a need for. And so this was an opportunity to do that. That more so on the on the nature of just rezoning it to a residential use is probably what we are basing our recommendation on and also why we have put in those very specific conditions for our recommendation of approval. That's that's basically all the the information that I have and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Commissioners, any questions for staff? Ms. Ellsworth.
So in the report, you mentioned that, let's see, there could be, or you're trying, let's see, subsequent development of the property will not create a negative cumulative effect on the already burdened neighborhood. Already burdened meaning burdened with traffic and parking?
Definitely. So this neighborhood already has, I mean, they are adjacent to Tim View High School. Tim View High School is a very, very popular place for not only the the students to come, but there are a lot of community events and things like that that are going on there. And so neighbors expressed frequently in our neighborhood meeting the burden that they feel from the parking situation, that oftentimes their neighborhoods are overburdened with that. Additionally, Quail Valley Drive is is not a a great street that you want to be, you know, playing on or anything like that. Specifically, as as you're coming down the street, it's only posted as 25 miles per hour, but there's obvious excessive speeding going on. And so we didn't want to contribute to a situation that could be hazardous. So we wanted to make sure that people were able to get on and off of Quail Valley Drive without incident, that there's adequate places for them to park, not only for the the residents, but you know, if there's any other events that are going on, and that it wouldn't create a situation where the office building plus the school plus the residential uses were creating even more impacts to the neighborhood. The the townhome development meets the requirements, the parking, the off-street parking requirements of our zone. The townhome development would be subject to the same occupancy requirements that are already enumerated in our in our zoning code. So a family or three singles. At the neighborhood meeting, we understood that the intention is that the development will remain under one ownership and then the units will be leased to renters or whatever, but the ownership remains the same. So there's more of a management situation there. That that type of situation exists all over our city. The occupancy requirements there are no different than for a single-family detached dwelling or or anything like that.
I have a couple more questions. What kind of traffic impacts do you expect with six units?
In all honesty, I I don't think that there would be that great of an impact. That being said, I'm not a traffic engineer. And so I don't know what the what the cumulative effect of that would be. So that's one reason we included that specific condition as recommended.
In our packets, there's two concept plans, I think. I think they're both called concept plans. No, one's a concept and one's a site plan. The site plan has 12 extras parking spots. Is that the one that we're?
That's the one that we're considering.
Okay. So we have 12, like exterior parking spots, and then we have 12 covered or garage spots, 24 total. Is that is that typical of what we?
So that actually exceeds our parking requirements significantly.
That gives four.
Because generally, it would be three per unit, which would be 18. And so they've they've exceeded that by six.
Yeah, so that's quite a bit. And then my last question is, where does the trash or dumpster happen on the site?
At this stage, we don't know.
Okay. Gotcha. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills?
I don't know if you'll be able to talk about the history, the kind of the PF part of the history. I mean, what I mean, it seems odd that what was the was the commercial site at one point also PF? Do you know, did your research turn up that or it just seems odd that?
It was a racquetball court, wasn't it?
Yeah, that's a really good part of the history of the site that I failed to mention. So it's my understanding that the PO part of this site, the office building, was originally residential, I think. Inso much as the history tells me. But in the very early 80s, this site was developed, was rezoned to allow an executive office use with indoor racquetball courts, as Mr. Howard talked about. And then the so essentially, this specific property is a little bit different than most other PO zones within our city because there are specific covenants and restrictions that specifically restrict that use to just executive office use for that site, which we generally interpret as an office use that is, you know, there aren't people coming to your site on a regular basis as far as customers would would go. It's just a a place where executives go to to perform their business and their their office work, things like that. For the subject parcel, the only thing that I can understand about why it was zoned PF is it's it's right next to a high school. And in the the nature of creating a general plan, you generally use a broad brush that would kind of include that situation because when they're probably when they probably went through to do the general plan the first time, you have a school on one side and you have a a PO use on the other side that the neighborhood specifically did not want to expand. And so one easy way to take care of that for the time being, because it's completely vacant parcel, is just designate it as PF.
So was the designation PF, did that, again, this is getting into the historical weeds that you may not have been into, was that, did that PF zone predate the building of Tim View by by quite a while or what did it happen kind of simultaneously? Tim View was built and then and then later on, they kind of in the general plan, some some update, they, well, the school's already there, let's just include this odd parcel as as PF. Do you know kind of what order it happened in?
My understanding is that Tim View High School was already established when the general plan map was created. And so the natural zoning designation for the high school would have been PF. And so at that time, it's my understanding that they went through and did that.
Okay.
One concern that was raised both in a letter that you have as well as at the neighborhood meeting was, is this a parcel that Tim View High School would be interested in purchasing, again, for expansion of the school or or anything like that? From my understanding, the, you know, just by looking at it, the topography, the topography is very different from where the existing campus is. And also to have the seminary parcel in between makes it a little bit difficult. But I did reach out to Provo High School. I got a, or excuse me, to Provo School District. Provo High School probably doesn't care at all. Provo School District and the superintendent emailed me back and said, they have looked at this parcel many, many times in the almost four decades, that it's been for sale and different things. And the challenges, like I mentioned, are topographical, topography, plus, you know, the the separation of the uses and just trying to figure out what Tim View would actually use it for. And also, at other times, the the price of the the piece has, because it's been adjacent to the other zone. But the general consensus that I got was that it's not, it's not something that Tim View is really interested in, just because of those issues.
That's really helpful because for me, the letter was the most, the potentially the most persuasive counter argument, if you will, to to the proposal. I mean, it would, in other words, that the the letter which argues that we need to preserve this as a possible parcel for Tim View High School would would lead one to answer those questions about public purpose for the amendment in question, confirmation that public purpose is best served by the amendment question. You would answer those in very different ways from the kind of perspective of of this letter. So anyway, so that's really helpful information for me to to have as we move forward in the conversation.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills?
I just wondered what kind of discussion has come forth about the property to the, I guess, as to the south of the of the of the sixplex project?
This this portion right here?
Yeah, the one that slopes down.
The it's almost, yeah, it's a it's a ridgeline kind of thing. And so the topography definitely hinders any type of development on that hillside. These homes that you can see here are developed at the top of the ridge and they, access to this is quite a bit over on foothill drive, right? Off of Quail? Oh, it comes around and up here kind of thing. That's right. Thank you.
Yeah, it looks like portions of that are too steep to even build homes on the one side.
I think that I think development on that ridge would, at this current time, would maybe have some serious problems.
Any other questions for Mr. Mills?
Sorry, that took longer than I thought it would.
No, it's good. Thank you. Appreciate it. All right, at this time, I will invite the applicant, Mr. Eastham, to discuss his project.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Corbin Church. I'm the owner of the property. Mr. Eastham is my developer and builder. Thank you for your time this evening. Mr. Mills did an outstanding job, so I'm not going to reiterate things that he has already covered so thoroughly. Well done. I purchased this building in July of last year. I had the building over at the bottom of Provo Canyon under contract that Mitt Romney was using for his office for the purpose of creating an incubator for BYU students. I'm an adjunct professor there of entrepreneurism. And I was looking for a response to University of Utah's LaSalle Institute for our students. And so this building was not available. And when Jordan Valley came along and wanted the building that Romney was in, I agreed to walk away from that and put this building under contract, much closer to Brigham Young University, it was much better for the students. So currently, this building is occupied by eight or nine student-owned businesses. They're in the incubation, they're in the startup phase, and that's what it's there for. A lot of this open space has been opened up, there's sofas and so forth in there, where the students get together and work. So it's a So it's a, uh, that type of an incubation space. Um, at the time I purchased the building, I purchased the adjoining property. Having no idea what the history of this was, I was quite surprised when we went to our first neighborhood meeting. I wasn't present, my wife was present, and a lot of anger and frustration was expressed at this meeting. I continued to learn as I went door to door, as I had face-to-face meetings, and as I met with neighbors. I learned the history of this building and I heard a lot of anger and frustration. And with all due respect to these neighbors, they have been disrespected and treated very poorly by the owners of this building throughout the years. One prime example is one owner one time used this building as a call center. Far more parking than parking spaces permitted. It overflowed onto the street and into their neighborhood. So the frustration that these neighbors feel is very warranted. As I spoke to them and learned of their concerns, traffic was a huge concern. Coming down around that bend, as Mr. Mills talked about, cars come down very quickly. And for the homes that are on the north side of that street and coming out of their circles, it's very dangerous to enter the street because of the speed of the traffic. The other issue then was parking. Now, I had an open house on a Saturday morning, three or four weeks ago, and I was stunned as I came up Quail Valley Drive to see both sides of Quail Valley Lot, Quail Valley Drive completely lined with cars. And each of those circles, the curbs were completely full of cars. And I thought, okay, now I understand why these residents are so frustrated. It's a real problem. There is a tremendous parking issue there and hey, I, I get why they're frustrated. Um, so, um, I went to commission a traffic study. And as I met with an independent firm regarding a traffic study, he looked at me and he said, "Six homes, six residential units will not impact the traffic on this road." Quail Valley is engineered for eighteen thousand cars a day. Current usage is at eight thousand. And so six homes will not impact that. I said, "Okay." And I went and I met with Mr. Penrod, Provo City Traffic Engineer. And I said, "Mr. Penrod, we have a real problem with traffic coming down this hill at a high rate of speed. We would like to propose that we pay for a speed warning, an electronic speed warning sign prior to the curve to in, to warn cars of their speed." He said, "This sounds like a reasonable proposal." So this week, a study was started. There are things on the road, uh, counter, sorry, I couldn't think of the word, to measure the number of cars and the speed of the traffic. That study will be done Wednesday of next week. We'll have the results back, at which time it will be determined if it warrants a speed traffic warning sign. The other major concern then is prop, is parking. As we've heard, um, and as I illustrated with that date, there was a ballroom dance competition and there was also a ACT prep taking place at the high school. That's why all that traffic. In meeting with neighbors, we said, "We'll greatly increase our parking stalls. We don't want to be a burden on the neighborhood. We intend to be a good neighbor in every way." And so um, as Mr. Mills said, we greatly increased the amount of traffic. The last major thing that I talked to neighbors about, parking, I'm sorry, I said traffic, thank you. The last major thing um that I talked to neighbors about was the concern of being a good neighbor. There is the perception that here comes Mr. Church, another property owner, another building owner, who doesn't care about us. That largely came about because of the restrictive covenants that exist on this building. I had no idea about these restrictive covenants. How do you buy a building and not know about the restrictive covenants on it? Well, that was the question that I took to my title company the morning after we had a community meeting. I took a letter from one of the neighbors, I sent it on to the title company, and I said, "How come I don't know about this?" It was determined after a lengthy review and a legal opinion, or excuse me, a legal statement sent to me by the title company's legal counsel, Curtin McConkey, that the legal description on the restrictive covenants has an error in it. And it puts the restrictive covenants on a property approximately a mile away in a different section. And because the abstract is wrong, when the title company or the county holds those restrictive covenants, it doesn't show them for this property. So I was quite surprised, but the circumstances are what they are at this point. I have offered with the neighbors to put something in place on that building to be sure that it's used for the proper purposes going forward. And I'm happy to agree to those, happy to put some good things in place so that these neighbors don't continue to be burdened. I've also made a lot of concessions um in an effort to be a good neighbor. I've worked on the Speed Street sign. Um, I doubled the number of the parking spaces plus the garages. There was a concern from one of the neighbors that I would use this for student housing due to the fact that I'm using the building for students. I'm happy to stipulate this would never be used for student housing. It's, it's not affordable. Um, there was a light on the street sign that was shining into people's homes. I had a timer put on the light so that it turns off at nine PM now. They said I was moving this through the planning commission very quickly. Why so fast? Are you doing it so fast so that we can't work on this? And I said, "Hey, I'll postpone it." And that's why we postponed it three weeks, was to give the neighbors plenty of time for us all to meet and discuss things. I'm happy to consider other things and I want to be a good neighbor. Mr. Mills pointed out, well, this is a unique piece of property. On the north side of the road, you have very nice neighborhood with single-family homes. On the south side of the road, you have a high school, you have a seminary, you have a public office building, and you have an infill property sandwiched in between them. It's just different. As PF, it could be a charter school, it could be a church. What I would like to say to the commissioners as well as to my neighbors, I think that what we've proposed represents the least amount of traffic and the least amount of pro- parking of the alternatives that could be proposed for that property. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. Yes, sir.
Mr. Howard.
Um, just to clarify, you own both parcels?
I own both parcels, sir.
Okay, you bought them both last July?
Yes, sir.
I see. Okay, well, uh, seeing a neal- need and filling it, you could put a Catholic uh seminary and a Jewish synagogue there, and I think we've got the problem solved. I'm just kidding. No, it's been a problem piece. I, I went to school at this, at the school in seventy-eight. It's an uphill walk all the way up to that piece of ground. I remember trudging to the seminary building and, and um, it seems to me like the decision among others is a choice between uh the protection of an R-zone and the potential uh problem that could develop in an, in another zone. Do you have any comments on that or do you see other uses of the property?
As I stated at the end, you know, your options for PF are a school, a church. Um, those types of options are going to result in much more traffic, much more parking. We, we're allowed up to eleven or twelve units on this property. We're proposing six. We don't want to be overburdened, so we want to be reasonable. Um, that's why there's a lot of extra uh property there. Neighbors, as I went door to door speaking to people, one lady told me she wants it to be a parking lot. I, I respect that opinion. Um, others said a park. Um, so those are the, the other alternatives that I've heard. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I wondered what uh, what kind of CCNRs you have, you have come up with or decided that would be implemented on the building now that don't, that doesn't have any.
Yeah, so, oh, for the building.
For the building.
You know, I'd love some feedback from the neighbors on that. Right now, it's, it's specified to be executive offices, which is an unclear designation, and racquetball or handball courts. So in its current state, we would argue we're using it as executive offices, which is acceptable. It, it's what it's supposed to be. Um, I think that the stipulations need to be around parking. I think that the frustration for, the neighbors would like that building removed. It, they don't feel it belongs, it's out of place. I wish I would have known that before I bought it probably. But now that we're in the circumstance that we're in and the building's been there forty years, we need to figure out what we're going to do with the circumstance we have. The restrictions that I would propose and that I'd be happy to work with the neighbors on is to limit the parking. There can only be enough tenants, enough office people in that building to take up a portion of the parking. And I think that could be done in conjunction with the city as well and what they do and parking stalls for a building, that's usually done per square foot. Those types of restrictions need to be in place. And that's not, I'm not using all the parking. But that's for the neighbors for the future. The discussions that I had is, it's not now, Mr. Church, it's what happens when you leave. And Mr. Mills was correct, I plan to own and maintain the, the townhomes myself as rental properties. It's what happens when Mr. Church leaves. That's a very fair argument that these neighbors have, and that's what I'd like to provide them protections on. We'll just have to have a meeting and discuss that.
Mr. Howard?
Clearly, you feel like you can occupy those townhomes. I went there and imagined myself living there and it is awkward because I guess unless I worked at maybe the, the building behind, that would be convenient. Or I was the principal of the school, that might be convenient. But, but looking out over the flat top of the high school and, and seeing a, you know, five hundred students blasting past my door every day doesn't really appeal to me. Plus game night, uh, you know, I uh, it's an awkward piece.
It's an awkward piece. Um, you bring up a good point. I don't think that Timview High School itself overstretches or overreaches its parking on a daily basis. I personally haven't seen it in the time I've been there. It's when there's a special event. It's, it's horrible.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it just really goes out into these neighborhoods. It, it's a real problem. Um, renters will look at that differently. There are actually really great views of the, the lake from up there. So it, it's great for, yeah.
I'm interested in the CCNRs on the townhomes. You said that you might restrict students from living there. Can you e- expound on that?
Yeah, uh, the student thing was just to appease one concern who said you could put students in there and swell that parking lot and be a problem, which as you know, that's not permissible under Provo zoning. So um, I don't need to do anything there because we already don't, that's not permissible. The restrictions that we have in our CCNRs is no RV parking, um, no parking on the street. Excess parking has to go into the office building and no cars can be worked on um outside of the garage area. So typical things like that that I do on all of my properties, those CCNRs will be in place as always to protect, protect me as much as to protect the, the other neighbors.
Ms. Ellsworth, whether or not somebody is a student isn't enforceable, nor is that something we would suggest. It's the occupancy issue. It's that you can't have more than three unrelated individuals living there, and that's what we would uh have enforced in the CCNRs.
Gotcha. Is there any, is there any appetite for creating like a shared parking agreement between these two developments where um, you know, in the evening when no one is at the executive office, they couldn't, like, people in the development can park over there in the executive?
Absolutely, yeah, they'll be owned by both, they'll, they'll be owned by the same entity. And we also offered that as a concession to the neighbors. We're happy to open up our office parking on evenings and weekends to help with the, the overflow of the traffic. It, we have thirty-six, I believe, stalls and it would help somewhat, not a lot, but some. It's far away from the school, but so is it to walk across Quail Valley. Cars do travel fast there, you'd be risking your life.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commissioners? All right.
Thank you for your time this evening, commissioners.
All right, at this point, we will open up the discussion to the public and I'll start with the neighborhood chair of the Edgemont neighborhood. If you would please address the podium and state your name for the record. And we are going to limit um the time that each um, each person can speak tonight.
Marion Monahan, Edgemont Neighborhood Chair. Uh, Robert gave a little history and I'd like to give just a little bit more. Since I've been the chair, we have had three neighborhood meetings on this piece of property. The first one, as I recall, they wanted to put a service station there, which we obviously, nobody would like a, a gas station there on that property. The next time was a Mr. Danny Gunnel. And I think it was several, several falls ago that he came and said he wanted to put an oil lease offices in there and one dentist's office. But the PF zone would remain parking. The neighbors looked at it and thought that would probably be agreeable with them. And that's the way it was left until last year, I was overseas and I picked up an email which said the planning commission was going to discuss the change from the PF to this. So I immediately sent an email to Robert and said, "We haven't had a neighborhood meeting. And so that's why you had the delay, because we insisted on having a neighborhood meeting on this." So that's, that's a little history. So we come to the neighborhood meeting and discover that we have a different owner, Mr. Church, who had bought both as the pieces of property. Mr. Gunnel was no longer in the picture, which left the neighbors kind of blindsided. And then he came with his proposal of the six units. So obviously, the neighborhood was upset over that. And he's described the parking, you know it's bad. That's a collector road for several neighborhoods. Quail Valley is, Indian Hills, Sherwood Hills. People are always going up that road way too fast coming down, including uh long borders and stuff, which I've seen on there, which are very dangerous. Um, so the neighbors, the neighbors listened to what he had to say. There were approximately thirty people there. Uh, we counted them out, we may have missed one or two. And then after the meeting, in which everybody said, "No, the traffic is bad. They, they park in front of our garages, they park on Quail Valley. It's going to, this is problematic." Uh, we took a vote of the people that were there. Twenty-eight were absolutely opposed. Two people said they would approve it. Neither one lived anywhere near the project. And so that is my report, that we had the meeting, the neighborhood is adamantly against this. It's an R-one, it's an R, R-one-ten neighborhood, ten thousand square feet. That's, they came into this neighborhood with that and they, they expect their neighborhood will stay the same and that that PF zone will not be turned into uh a lot more housing, which is going to cause more problems in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present who would like to address this item? Please come forward and state your name.
Hi, I'm Bonnie Morrow, North Timview Neighborhood. And um, as Marion Monahan has mentioned, uh, we've had lots of projects proposed, three uh for this parcel in uh different manners to be developed. Historically, it's been brought up over and over before the planning commission that this was supposed to be when that commercial building went in, overflow parking. And that's why the neighborhood originally agreed to even have that commercial building built that was housing the racquetball, because that is what was promised to the neighborhood, that it would be overflow parking. That is historically why that piece is set blank all these years, even during the boom. When uh, uh, property was out of sight in Provo, that could not be developed because it was supposed to be overflow parking. So now here we are and um, I have here, I'm representing North Timview Neighborhood, I have signatures from a hundred and forty-seven uh residents of North Timview that do not want this property to be developed as townhomes. Um, I know of three individuals who do, that are in favor of it and a hundred and forty-seven and counting that are not. I received phone calls, but I've not added them to this list because I don't have their signature to actually hand it to you. So um, that, that is one of the main concerns is the historical on it. And I know it's very dicey to try and figure out uh what has gone on, but I know there are residents here who have lived through it that will be coming up to speak to that. Um, and then I did ask the neighbors, "Okay, should this be developed?" And then I did ask the neighbors, okay, should this be developed? What would you let be developed there? We're on round three. What would you let be developed there? Should the city come back and say, "No, too bad. We don't care that it said it was overflow parking. We're not honoring that anymore. We're going to let them develop it." What would you let them do? And unanimously, everyone said, "Okay, R110," because that's what we're all living in, is R110. And that's North Timpview. All the homes surrounding the high school are R110. So if it is not going to be enforced that this is overflow parking, that is what they would acquiesce to. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Morrow. Are there any other neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to this item?
I'm Sharon Memmott. I'm vice chair for this neighborhood, and I need to speak on behalf, Nancy Wilson had to leave. She's the neighborhood chair for Indian Hills, which sits the brown in the bottom right corner is technically her neighborhood, because this is a collector road for her neighborhood. It affects several neighborhoods. It's kind of a wonky piece of property there. We had several concerns. I was also at the meeting. It was well represented that pretty much everybody was against it. The few that, the two that did, weren't in favor, don't live near the property. One of our concerns is, I do have a copy of this restrictive covenant that is on the office building. I'm not sure what he's referring to because the address is very clearly stated on the top of it as being 890 East and 3650 North. That seems pretty straightforward for what property it's attached to, so it shouldn't have been that hard to find. So we appreciate that you're willing to pay for that speed bump. I had a couple of questions about the staff's report. If it's changed to LDR, what is the maximum that they would be allowed? As you recommend in your report, that if development permits for the proposed site are not approved, I don't know if you are specifically referring to if permits aren't given for this specific project, just the six townhomes, or if any permits for any LDR, which could be a greater number, because I don't know what the maximum is on LDR. And as has been stated, the neighbors are already not excited about six townhomes. More would just really be upsetting. It is a blind corner. It is on a downhill. I also noticed that you recommend that he needs to demonstrate graphically and empirically that these zone change won't cause problems, but shouldn't we do that before we make the zone change? That just kind of makes more sense to me. And I appreciated Rachel Luke from Rock Canyon, also an adjacent neighborhood, made comment that it was a, that while we do need more housing in Provo, it doesn't make sense to, and she's submitted this, it's in your packet, that it doesn't make sense to pack more homes on a downhill, blind corner where they already deal with this traffic issue. Several neighbors did say that they're willing to, we believe in property rights in Provo. So we appreciate that he wants to develop this, but it is an R110 area, and that's also the neighbors that I've talked to, what they felt would be an appropriate rezone, not the LDR zone.
Thank you. Are there any other neighborhood chairs present? All right, I will open it up to comments from the general public, and as you come forward, please state your name for the record.
I appreciate the opportunity to address you. I've written some notes earlier today to try and summarize. If you don't mind, I'll refer to that. My wife and I have lived in the same home in the cul-de-sac just north of the property being considered for zoning change since 1984. We've been there for 35 years, we're in the second cul-de-sac down. We are attracted to the site for a number of reasons. Foremost among them was the quality of the neighborhood that attracted stable families with values similar to ours. The single-family home zoning was something we took for granted, but benefited by the attraction it provided for permanent established and stable homesteads. We stretched our budget in acquiring the property so we could live in an area that did not attract the problems associated with temporary housing and transient occupants. Having the high school, the elementary school, and the seminary building close by were all positive features that have contributed to our decision to move into our home. We hardly took notice of the commercial building just up the street, as it was a site for very little activity at the time, and didn't seem to make a big difference to the quality of our lives. Over the years, we saw some occupants of that building come and go with not a lot of impact on us. With the passage of time, however, we have seen more aggressive activity at this building with an increasing traffic problem and unstable tenants. We learned that the building, which was an anomaly in North Provo, being the only commercial building of this kind above Timpview Drive, was under some original restrictive covenants that were imposed on the use of the building to help safeguard the neighborhood from uses of the building not consistent with its location in a single-family zoned neighborhood. Others can't speak more clearly on the history of the building, these restrictive covenants, and the inflexive request to use the building without regard to honoring the letter or spirit of such covenants. I mention this because it appears that the latest purchaser of the building has also disregarded the intent of the covenants because he purchased the building unaware of them. The property in question for a zoning change appears to be part of a master plan to provide funding for this profit, for-profit business. We have learned from the buyer that he wants to be a good neighbor, and that he sees his efforts as being charitable. A clarification of how these things are going to be accomplished is appropriate for discussion. The business is already practically filling the associated parking lot every weekday. It appears ready for a significant expansion as the major renovations were recently undertaken at the facility. Final paragraph, thank you for your indulgence. Our property values, the character of the neighborhood, the increased congestion of traffic on Quail Valley, the safety needed for the schoolchildren. May I finish?
Please.
Okay. And the parking in the area will be negatively impacted by a zoning change. In the limited time we have had to discuss the proposed change to signatures, we have received signatures from the high-impact zone, people up and down Quail Valley. The attached 147 signatures in this zone tested this, but we haven't had time to survey beyond that. The change to low-density housing would impact all the above uses negatively. By changing the zoning, we open up so many issues beyond our control and the control of the business and the property owners involved. One of the things that has not been pointed out is the elementary school is just below the high school. We probably have a couple of dozen elementary schools come down around that curve, students every day during school year. So that is a safety concern to us. Thank you for your time.
Would you please state your name for the record, sir?
Steve Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. All right, are there any other members of the public who would like to address these
My name is Susan Robinson, and I'm Steve Robinson's wife, and we live directly across the street. And we're the ones, with the exception of 25 signatures, we're the ones that went door-to-door talking to people, and I was never, you never came to my door. But people, the majority, were very much against this. We have had, as stated before, the traffic problem. We've had two cars go through our fence. The Ungremans, two cul-de-sacs up, have had two cars go through their fence, and the people below us have had a car go through their fence and hit their gas line and almost blow up the neighborhood. I feel like it's so easy to say, "We will be good neighbors," and, "No one will park on the street." But who's going to enforce that? Who's going to stand there and say, "You can't park here?" And my daughter lives in South Provo in a place where there are all rentals, and they have restricted parking, and they have two car garages, and they have three, only three people to rent, and every time, they have so many parties, and there's people parking all over. And we do have a major traffic problem. It's so congested, and we feel like the reason why the restrictive covenants were put on this building in the beginning was the building should not have been put in that spot in the beginning. Mayor Ferguson put it in there, and he, for a buddy of his, and he put the restrictions so he wouldn't ruin the neighborhood, and that's part of the problem. Also, this is not the third time we've had someone want to do a drug rehab. We wanted a 7-Eleven-type store. We wanted a fine art, they, someone wanted a fine art school. We did approve the fine art school there, and then they didn't have enough funding. We have, as neighbors, we are very tired, and it's hard, and I've heard this from everybody, almost every single person with that exception, that this is a problem. Anyway, thank you. I just recommend that you deny this request.
Thank you, Mrs. Robinson. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to these three items?
I'd like to thank the council for the opportunity to share my thoughts on this. My name is Mark Ungerman. I live in the next cul-de-sac up. I'm the one that's had the brick wall torn down a couple of times. And I appreciate the comments that Mr. Church has made. I thought that he was very eloquent in stating his position, and I think that he's done a reasonable job in trying to assuage some of the concerns that the neighborhood has. But I think the thing that we need to understand here, and by the way, I've lived in this home, I bought the home in 1991, and I'm going to echo what's been said prior. We were attracted to the neighborhood for many of the qualities that still exist there today. It's a wonderful neighborhood with well-kept homes, and the amenities of the schools and everything make it a wonderful place to live. We've very much enjoyed living there. It's also been said that this office building should have never been built there. I think we all agree that it should never have been built there. But the thing that's kept the peace has been these restrictive covenants that have been on the building and on the associated property. To have these covenants and restrictions come into play, especially against the expressed wishes of the community, is deeply upsetting. I think that if there is any consideration for changing the zoning, I think that many of us would be open to considering some sort of a change, provided that there was ample parking for any future use of the office building, and that the zoning be changed not to low-density housing, but to the zoning which permits housing on a quarter-acre lot of similar size to the homes that are around. And so if there's any change to zoning that would like to be proposed and considered, I urge you to consider that change rather than the change to the low-density housing that's currently under consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ungerman.
My name is Susan Brownwell. I live right across the street from the proposed development, and we've owned that home since 1978. And so, Adam, that whole thing was PF. Right above the office building, there is a city power box, a big one with a lock key on it. And they originally had all of that there, and that one section, they took one section and changed it so they could build that office building with the promise that the rest of that would be a parking lot to help eliminate parking in the neighborhoods with the office building. And so, like our concerns are, is that it's got restrictive covenants on it now, and it hasn't been upheld. And we want to believe that everybody wants to get along and do what's best for that property, but it's been there for 40 years, and we haven't been able to keep it restricted like it's supposed to be. I lost my glasses, so I'm having a hard time. So there's a disconnect. Nancy told me as she was leaving that they had a PTA meeting at Timpview High School. She brought up this issue and said, "Hey, what about putting a parking lot up there?" And the principal and the PTA was very receptive to the idea, so we might want to make sure that there's not a disconnect between the district and the school on that, because that was just brought up this week at the PTA meeting. The speed warning, I saw the sign there. It's down by my garage. Think you need to move it up a little bit, because by the time they get down to the flat spot, they slow down. And so I think that's great, because you'll see that that's, the speed limit is not abided by at all. Now, I did notice that on the original plan, I think they were two-bedroom units, and we've now switched them to three-bedroom. They were always three-bedroom. Okay. And so that was our concern, is that with a three-bedroom unit, you would need three parking places at a minimum, without any visitors ever visiting there. So our whole thing is that if we have to change, oh, if you look at the map, the south end of that property, I know it's included in the seven-eighths of an acre, it's very unusable. And so there's quite a bit of space at that south end that can't even be used. So where the parking stopped is about, the rest of that property is pretty well unusable. And so anyway, as a neighborhood, we really would like to find some happiness with that building, because it is kind of, it's been a mess for the whole 40 years that we've been there. And if we're going to change the zone, it should be an R110, because that is what the neighborhood is. And so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who would like to speak to these items?
Hello, Brian Henry. I'm a neighbor nearby this area. I just want to speak, one, to just kind of clear some air of some rumors I've heard about me concerning this property. With Mr. Church, I did not know him before this neighborhood meeting. I went to the neighborhood meeting, unsure, just more curious what the proposal was, what they were proposing. At the meeting, there was a lot of anger being expressed, which is fully understandable. There are some issues there. At the end of the meeting, I did get up trying to talk about, "Let's find some solutions. Let's talk about what can we do to solve the issues." The speeding on Quail Valley Drive, to me, felt like something, townhomes weren't the problem, it's speeding people. Cars going through fences, I don't understand why townhomes affects people that can't drive their cars and drive them off the road. But in order to understand more, I contacted Mr. Church, and we met two days later to better understand what project he, what the project was. From that experience, I came to know Mr. Church as someone who is trying to help be a good neighbor. He expressed to me that he was postponing the city, or this planning commission meeting at that point, to better understand what the neighbors' concerns were and to give some time to address some of these issues. He did offer the building to me. I'd been planning separate from this meeting, my own personal neighborhood meeting, to try and discuss solutions to some issues we are having in the neighborhood. I couldn't find a place to hold that meeting. He offered it free of charge as a public good for the neighborhood, and he wants to be a good neighbor. I believe that he's open to other events being held there for the neighborhood, and I've just come to really admire what he's doing in the building adjacent. I honestly don't have an opinion on the townhomes, but I would recommend some very strong traffic calming measures on that street, because it is. I drop my daughter off at Timpview every day, and there are some very fast cars. The Timpview Drive and Quail Valley, the stop sign there, I've never seen more people run a stop sign in my life since moving to this neighborhood four years ago, and they all seem to be coming down the hill, just not even tapping the brakes, going through that stop sign. So that's been my experience with Mr. Church.
Thank you.
Just forgot to mention, if there's going to be restrictive covenants, maybe we ought to get those in writing before we approve any kind of a project.
Any other public comments at this time? All right, we will close this to public comment and invite the applicant back up to address any concerns that he had expressed. Mr. Church?
I'll be very brief, because I know it's running long. Entering Quail Valley, the risk in entering Quail Valley, having pulled out of that office for the last seven months, the risk in entering Quail Valley comes from the north, turning on. That's the blind side. When I pull out of the office building, I have a complete view up Quail Valley. I see all the oncoming traffic. The risks really are upon these The risks really are upon these neighbors on the north side of the road. It's very real. I don't know how to solve these things. That's not upon townhomes being built or an office building, but it's a real problem. I know nothing about a parking lot being built on that property. I just wonder how an office building built 40 years ago that promised a parking lot and it's never occurred? That's a long, long time. Mr. Robinson asked a question of me about the charitable efforts. I subsidized the rent for most of these students. It's the purpose of the building. It's about 20 to $22 per square foot or $100 a desk space. It was intended for that purpose. He said that the office building was recently renovated and is ready for expansion. That's, that's not entirely, that is not the case at all. The building was flooded from a broken pipe. And so when we purchased it, we had to come in and mitigate all of the flood damage and restore the sheet rock and the carpet, the flooring and all of that. So all of the work was done prior to moving in. The building is nearly full. There's, there's one space still open that somebody could come in and take. So it could grow by a little bit. We don't even come close to using our parking. So I, I don't think that the office building in its current use is a problem at all. I think very, I think neighbors would have a very difficult time arguing that.
Mr. Church, if the zone isn't changed and it remains public facility zones, what might you do with it?
I'll seek a buyer. I'll go find somebody to abide by the PF zoning and put whatever, you know, sell the property. I'm not just going to continue to pay taxes on it if I can't use it. So the idea was to put a property there that would generate income, that would help offset the expenses of the building. But I, I really respect these neighbors and their circumstances. It's a frustrating area and I bought into this. I'm the newcomer to the party and it's not one of those fun parties.
Well, you're adhering to your five entrepreneurial points and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions for Mr. Church?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioners, I will turn this back over to us for further discussion. Would you like to hear from Public Works in terms of traffic impacts?
Yeah.
No?
I'd like to say something.
Yes.
I agree with the comment that this executive office shouldn't have been built. I drove up there today and it is, it just stands out. It's, it doesn't fit into the context of this neighborhood and yeah, I understand that. That being said, the speeding that is occurring in that neighborhood is not this developer's fault. So I think that's a different issue that needs to be addressed outside of this consideration, outside of these proposals. And then if the school district is interested in buying it, that's, I mean, I think that's also outside of this discussion because they've had 40 years to do that and they're not represented here nor do we represent them. And I just think that's a separate issue. I don't think, I don't think there's a great solution for this site. It's, it's kind of an awkward site. And I don't know what fits in there, but if this is the best solution that's come along in 40 years, I think that it's adequate. And I would just ask that a dumpster not be located on Quail Valley Drive.
Thank you. Mr. Rowan?
I have a couple of comments, but I want to start with a question. It's been several of the neighbors, residents from that neighborhood have referenced restrictive covenants on, it seems to me, on the property that we're, we're considering. Is there any, it's hard for me to tell if, you know, what's, what was a historical promise? What was a covenant? What's getting confused with the language of covenants on the building versus covenants on the property? What have you found as staff in your research and just familiarity with that piece of property? Are there covenants on that property or is...
Great question. There are, there are covenants on the property with the office building, but those covenants do not extend to the property that we're talking about.
But there are no covenants about a parking lot on that property?
That's correct. My understanding is that from the neighbors is that in the historical negotiations and things like that, it was represented that at some point there would be a parking lot on that project. But there is no covenant that I can find. There's no condition or anything like that. I'd also just add that those, those restrictive covenants give equal opportunity to the city and to the neighbors to seek a rezone, to seek an injunction, things like that. So it basically gives everybody, everybody that's even remotely associated to this property...
The property with the building?
With the building. So the, with the restrictive covenants, the opportunity to, to go to court and say, hey, this guy, this building and the use isn't correct or there's something wrong or we want to rezone this property. So I, I think that's important to understand that there's, there's an equal opportunity on both the city and anybody involved with this process that they could go through that and seek a rezone if, if that's something that they desire.
So, thank you for answering that question. I, I mean, I, I understand that a lot of this stuff is bundled up together and it's hard to separate things out. Our job as a planning commission, I think, is to keep our focus on what we are hearing. You know, tonight, we're, the decision that we're making isn't about the building. It's not about the degree to which that building's occupants have adhered to the restricted covenants or not, about even whether the current owner is adhering to those or not. It appears to me that it is, again, with even though we don't have the restricted covenants before us to read, I mean, we're not talking about that. You know, our job is to think about the piece of property that, that this applicant, Mr. Church, is seeking a rezone for and to redraw the general plan. So that's what I'm, I've been trying to do. I've been trying to tease out a lot of the, again, understandable bundling of issues and complaints and history. And, you know, I think Mr. Church's sympathies are, strike me as genuine and I'm certainly sympathetic as a member of the planning commission. Having said that, you know, again, what I see our job as is making decisions that make sense, not just in the context of the, of the very local, this particular neighborhood, but also in the context of the, of the city at large. In that sense, the insistence upon R-110 strikes me as, coming from a really privileged place that seeks to offload any type of density, even though this proposed type of density of six townhomes onto other neighborhoods. Other neighborhoods in Provo are bearing the burden of inevitable growth that is coming to Provo right now. And that's not a force, a historical force that we can change in any way. And so the insistence upon, of one neighborhood insisting that they not bear that burden in any way strikes me as, as unfair and, and irresponsible to some degree. I understand the desire for an aesthetic harmony. If, you know, R-110 here, we got to have R-110 there. That doesn't make sense to me in terms of the larger burden that Provo is bearing as it, as it grows. So, so for me, that argument holds, holds very little weight. I don't, I don't think that having townhomes is a, an excessive burden upon anyone. I don't think it affects property values of anyone. And in fact, I feel, you know, discussions, even though I understand the neighborhoods, the residents in this neighborhood wouldn't feel this way, the discussion is that it's actually better for neighborhoods to have mixed housing products, to have a neighborhood that consists of entirely the same zone and to insist upon homogeneity of that zone is not wise, not wise planning. So that's where that, that's how that argument resonates with me. I just don't, I don't feel it's a, I don't feel it's a valid one in the context of the larger city. And I understand you're shaking your heads, but for me, as someone who makes a decision based on the, on the whole city, to have to have six townhomes is not an unnecessary burden and it does very little to traffic impact, it does very little to property values. And, and that's a point that I feel pretty insistent about, no matter how many signatures you get that oppose this. I don't know that that's your privilege in the context of the larger city. I'll say something really quickly though. Again, this, this feels to me to be outside the scope of, of what we're talking about directly. The solution to the speeding, I think as generous as the sign is, is, you know, that may help a little bit. It's a redesign of the street. The, the street has been designed poorly and that's why, that's why there's speeding. And so, you know, moving forward, Mr. Church and the neighborhood, as you work that out, I don't know that it's your responsibility to redesign the entire street per se, but I, I think that might be part of the conversation moving forward, maybe signage in addition to thinking about other design features that you might implement. I think that's going to be much more, much more effective. So I think I'll stop there for now. Those people on the commission know, I may jump in later with additional, additional thoughts. But my initial inclination is to forward a positive recommendation for this project.
Mr. Howard?
Well, it's a problematic piece. It's been a problematic piece for a long time. It was bought perhaps on speculation and not knowing the full history and how could you? My personal view is it's not a good fit. I don't think there's going to be a good fit. I do think that there's a risk of the community, should the zone remain the same, of someone getting a less desirable presence there. But I, I do, I am compelled by the letter that was written. There's a similar situation over on Centennial. But, but having walked this ground and having grown up in this area, and I, I understand what you're saying and I appreciate what you're saying and how you're saying it, I do not think that those six townhounds, townhomes over the long haul without something happening to change the office building or the seminary are going to make them a success. And so I would be opposed to, to changing the zone.
Any other comments, discussion?
I'll just, since traffic and the transportation master plan have been on our, our plate for a while now, I'm really happy that Mr. Day is here from Public Works so he could hear that. And you don't have to come up, but this is just a reiteration of one of our concerns about streets that are designed to be too wide, that create speeding opportunities and then public safety hazards. So this Quail Drive may be a location where in the future, if there's that much parking happening on both sides, bold outs to control where the parking happens, to clearly, you know, get it away from intersections and things of that nature as a retrofit over time, long-term, big picture. I think it supports what we've been discussing as a planning commission. I feel like it is a very constrained piece of property, both by topography, by the existing conditions, you know, there's only so much you can do with it. I don't think you could get very many homes situated if you tried to do a little cul-de-sac development there. There's just, isn't the room to accommodate that. The six townhomes, I'm not opposed to that. I'm not opposed to LDR with a limit to six townhomes. I feel that the applicant has gone above and beyond the parking requirements for sure. So even during holidays and other events, there is adequate, more than adequate parking to accommodate three cars per unit. There's actually four cars per unit on that site in terms of parking, both covered and open. And then there's always the opportunity for the overflow parking since the same owner to use that in, you know, at peak periods. I mean, that's where I weigh in on this.
Mr. Anderson?
I appreciate Commissioner Ronan making it easier for me just to echo a lot of the things that he shared. And I certainly acknowledge as well that maybe this isn't a totally ideal fit for the situation, but it's really hard for me to envision there being any real adverse impact on this surrounding neighborhood or the properties or that type of a thing from this happening, particularly given the other things that could happen there. And I'll just leave it at that.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I'd like to make a motion.
Please.
This is for item three.
Let's take them one by one. So this is for item three?
Yes, this is for item three. Yes. So I move that we approve the requested general plan map amendment for the, let's see here, for 862...
Recommend approval.
Recommend approval.
Recommend for approval. Thank you. So I move that we recommend for approval, the requested general plan map amendment at 862 East Quail Valley Drive, which includes .78 acres. And let's see, for, from public facilities to residential to allow six townhomes in a proposed LDR zone with the following conditions. That all CRC comments are adequately resolved prior to building permit approval of any proposed development. The applicant shall demonstrate graphically and empirically that the proposed map amendment and subsequent development of the property will not create a negative cumulative effect on the already burdened neighborhood. And three, if the development permits for the proposed site are not approved within three years from the date of the approval, the general plan map designation for the subject property will revert to the current PF designation. If it can be shown that development permits are actively being pursued, a time extension may be granted by community development, by the community development director, commensurate with the anticipated time needed to secure such approvals.
Thank you, Ms. Ellsworth. Do we have a second for Ms. Ellsworth's motion, seconded by Mr. Knutson? All those in favor of recommending...
Can we have a quick discussion, just really quickly? I, I want to, I'm in favor of the motion, but a question of staff really quickly. There was conversations about continuing the conversation about the, the restricted covenants. Would you advise that that be built into the motion in any way? Or do we trust that the process, the conversation among the property owner and the neighborhood will continue inevitably? Or what would you advise?
Standard operating procedure in these situations is that covenants have to be turned in as part of the project plan approval. They have to be reviewed and approved by the city before the project approval is given. Also, standard operating procedure in a situation like this where somebody is offering to, due to less development than the LDR zone would allow, there's a development agreement that's tied to the property and tied to the development being proposed and that development agreement makes us wait in the city council in time for them to discuss the zone change.
Thank you.
Does that answer your questions as far as safeguards or...
Right. So that, that's not going to happen on any of the items that we have tonight because it's not a project plan approval? Or would you recommend that when we get to item five, the concept plan approval, that we would say, build into the, the motion there, we would like to see when this does come up for project plan approval?
You don't need to do that because that's standard operating procedure. That's the way we do it and by our...
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, that makes sense.
The CCNRs are actually required in the code, so it's not just process, but it's ordinance.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Okay, Ms. Ellsworth's motion is to forward a positive recommendation on item three. Do we have a second for that motion? Seconded by Mr. Knutson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item three?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed, so we will forward a positive recommendation on item three to municipal council.
I'd like to make a motion on item four.
Ms. Ellsworth?
So I'd like to forward a positive recommendation of approval for the requested zoning map amendment at 862 East Quail Valley Drive for .78 acres from public facilities zone to low-density residential zone with the following conditions. Should I repeat these again?
Please.
Okay. One, that all CRC comments are adequately resolved prior to building permit approval of any proposed development. Two, the applicant shall demonstrate graphically and empirically that the proposed zone change and subsequent development of the property with townhomes will not create a negative cumulative effect on the already burdened neighborhood. And three, if development permits for the proposed site are not approved within three years from the date of approval, the zoning designation for the subject property will revert to the current PF designation. If it can be shown that development permits are actively being pursued, a time extension may be granted by the community development director, commensurate with the anticipated time needed to secure such approvals.
Thank you. Do we have...
One second.
Seconded by Mr. Rowan. All those in favor of forwarding a positive approval for item, or a positive recommendation for approval of item four?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Opposed by one. We will forward a positive recommendation on item four to municipal council.
I'd like to make a motion on item number five.
Ms. Ellsworth?
I'd like to, this is not a recommendation, right, this is an approval.
Yes.
So I move that we approve the requested concept plan at 862 East Quail Valley Drive for a six-unit townhome development in the proposed low-density residential zone with the following conditions: one, approval of the concept plan is contingent upon approval of the concurrent general plan map amendment and rezone requests. If the municipal council does not approve the amendment and rezone requests, approval of this concept plan application becomes moot, as it will be inconsistent with the underlying general plan and zoning map designations. Two, that all CRC comments are adequately resolved prior to building permit approval for the proposed development; and, three, that the dumpster or trash facilities do not go on Quail Valley Drive, but they are in the back of the property.
Thank you. Do we have a second for Ms. Ellsworth's motion on item five? Seconded by Mr. Knudsen. All those in favor of approving item five, subject to those conditions?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
One opposed. All right, so item five is approved. And due to the time, I think we're going to take a quick five-minute break, so we'll adjourn for five minutes and be right back. Thank you.
So the residents who are just here for this item, if I could see you in the back of the room, I'll clarify some of the process going forward.
And the restaurant's already permitted use? Or is that a conditional use?
Yeah, because it's mixed-use area.
Okay, thank you.
The RC zone was amended for this building so that it could be used for eating places. Now, it happened about a year ago, went through you and through the city council about a year ago.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for staff? Ms. Ellsworth.
I'm sorry, I don't know what covered bicycle parking looks like. Can you describe that?
It has a cover over it. So, you could have some sort of awning that covers a bike rack. You could enclose it indoors. There's a number of ways, but the main purpose of it is to prevent rain and snow and sun from falling on these bicycles. The intent is that it's used for long-term bicycle storage. So, the residents of this duplex, that they would store their bikes there. No matter the weather, they would be kept in good shape.
Ms. Ellsworth.
And it's a duplex, so we're looking at maybe like two families or six residents there. Does that sound right?
Yep.
Okay, so they're like you and they have a lot of bikes?
Uh huh.
Any other questions for staff? All right, seeing none, I will invite the applicant, Michael Wade.
How you guys doing? Thank you for your time. Do you want me, sorry, I don't necessarily know the procedure. Should I introduce myself, or do you want me to?
If you would, if there's anything you'd like to add to what staff presented about your project that you think would be pertinent?
I mean, that could be a very long answer.
Don't give us that one. Don't give us the very long answer.
The Cliff Notes.
Our response, Bill, Bill Penney will tell you that. But, yeah, I mean, generally, it's a food hall. It's specific to that neighborhood. It really, I spent so much time just trying to figure out exactly what would be the highest and best use for that parcel, for that space. When I originally, as Bill mentioned, had the property, the building zone amended to allow for commercial eating spaces, the first inclination and really economic incentive would have just been to, as you can see, it's about 33, 340 square feet, would it be to just add two interior walls and then have about three vanilla shell-like retail spaces that are about 1,000 square feet? And that's just kind of simple, like strip center retail, and just kind of lease those up and just kind of be done with it. But, my, like, the whole, and I'm not trying to get a long answer here, but essentially, the whole purpose of like what I'm trying to do as a developer and to really maximize that was to say, hey, look, that could have worked, but what's the best thing to do? And the best thing that I could have, that I saw with that project and that property is to create kind of this community atmosphere where people can kind of come together, kind of take down those walls and have this kind of, this food hall atmosphere where it's locale, restaurateurs blended with kind of an experiential experience for the guests, you know? So, that's kind of the general synopsis of the backstory. Pertaining to the specific issue of the parking, this is something that I really have to have to make this food hall really viable. And it's something that the neighborhood, as well as just kind of that area being very student-dense, and an independent professional engineering company that did a kind of a traffic or parking reduction plan are all in support of, so.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Wade?
I'll just say, I think it's a great idea. I mean, good job on getting to that place. Do you have vendor, like, kind of vendors lined up already, or where are you at in that process?
We do.
This has nothing to do with what we're, you know, the formal, but I would love to hear a very short version of, just to satisfy my curiosity of what's going to be in there.
So, right now, the plan is to, so there's seven stations. Only a few of those stations are actually equipped for like food. So, we have a kind of like a really small drink station, then we have an ice cream station, and then we have a pizza kind of in that back corner there, and that's Summit and Pizza. They're based out of actually Camas, they have a store in Lehigh, and then three or four pepper throughout the state. And then we have Protein Foundry. They kind of do acai bowls, smoothies, avocado toast, stuff of that nature. And then Bento Box, they've been very successful at the University of Utah with Japanese-style food. And then the last remaining stall is Seven Brothers, which they're in the River Woods, and they have a few locations. I don't know if you've heard of them, but they're kind of Hawaiian, kind of blended with American-style hamburgers and stuff. So, really looking for, I mean, part of the reason why this has taken so long is just because we want, not just the best design, the best builders, but like the best, like, brands and vendors. And so, I've just been under the assumption the whole time, like, hey, if this takes a little longer to do it right, I might as well do it. So, it's taken a long time to find like the right people, but I think in the long run, it will pay off, so.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
Mr. Howard, did you have a question?
That's the question I wanted to know.
Any other questions for Mr. Wade?
Do you worry about the lack of parking causing people not to be able to find a parking space? They'll just drive somewhere else?
You know, I really don't. I really don't, because...
So, you expect it all to be pretty much walk-in traffic?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I actually live in that area and have lived, I've been in that area for quite some time. And kind of like the Hels Engineering Report kind of articulated, because of the UVX, you know, station that's just right over there, just the walkability of that area, it's just, it's not something that, you know, I actually think that it's better that you don't actually have a lot of parking, because it kind of encourages kind of the walkability even more. So, somebody in the neighborhood council, I believe his name is Wayne Parker, actually said, if I'm, maybe I'm getting that wrong.
Wayne Levitt?
Wayne Levitt, yeah.
Not to be confused with Wayne Parker.
Yeah. Anyways, I believe he told me that if you have a lot of parking, then you actually encourage people from other areas of the community. That kind of defeats the purpose of, hey, we just want to maximize the locality of this area, you know what I mean? So, and another point, I'm a long-winded answer here, but another point is that I think having just kind of the low-barrier entry where like if you're a student and you want to go get food instead of having to, you know, get in your car and drive somewhere and go find a parking spot and, you know, all these different things. I mean, just that the village alone has about 1,000 students that live there. And so, you, I mean, within a few seconds, you can be, you know, from your dorm to the food hall. So, it's actually really convenient.
And I'd like to make a point to that, walkability, the nature of it. Like you said, the village is about a block away. There's, on this map, there's, yeah, yeah. There's all sorts of apartments for students. And then, if you look at restaurants like Slab Pizza, Cup Bop, J-Dogs, these are all restaurants with little to no parking that succeed. And you can see that Slab Pizza's been there for years, same with J-Dogs. So, you can succeed without a lot of parking in this area.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Wade? Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
All right, I'd like to invite the neighborhood chair to come forward and address anything she has for item six.
Okay, Celeste Knard, Joaquin neighborhood chair. We have met with Wade, and we actually had some of these plans like back in 19, or 2014-ish. Some of the basic ideas started to come. Definitely, a use like this appeals to the neighborhood as far as, like, oh, maybe people won't get in their car. And definitely a positive. There is some worry with some of the neighbors that the parking will be an issue, but I think in general, we would rather have it be not asphalt everywhere, because that actually reduces the chance that you're going to walk there. So, and it's so close to the UVX stop, just a little bit of worry. So Delicious is the most trouble with the parking, like, compared to Slab and everything, because it's very common for when the big, that big tri-stake center that's on Ninth East, when they have like a women's conference or a, the people come from there and they just, they park on the lawns, they park on the sidewalk. I mean, it's, and it's not the students in this case that are doing this. It's the grown-ups with kids in Provo. But, you know, I don't know what to do about it. I don't know if I, as far as the neighborhood is concerned, if we would necessarily want any of the employees to ever be able to park in those spaces. That seems like a good idea if we had a parking permit in place, which we are in the process of doing. And I think it's most likely to happen now than any other time in the past, but that still doesn't give it a huge chance of passing, because it's just really hard to do. So, that's, you know, the main thing. I sent the minutes to Bill and to, to Austin. Austin Taylor. So, they have any other smaller concerns that don't really have to do with zoning or planning or, yeah. Anyways, I, generally, we're in favor.
Great, thank you, Celeste.
So Delicious is in Joaquin Village.
Yeah, So Delicious is in Joaquin Village, and for some reason, like, J-Dogs doesn't cause that problem, and neither does. And I don't know if it's because J-Dogs has a big, huge...
They don't deliver the same amount of sugar.
Or it's just, no, yeah.
Very serious about our soda pop.
Or what. But, in general, like, this is very, looked forward to in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay.
I think we're good. All right, are there any other neighborhood chairs who would like to address this item? If not, I will open it up to general public comment. Anyone in the community who would like to speak to this item? And please state your name for the record.
The Honorable Wayne.
I'm Wayne Levitt, not Wayne Parker. But I do want to say that we've been working with Mike Wade. We first met in 2016, and he's been very receptive to our ideas about what we want in this area. And so, as a neighborhood, we've been happy to see his response to comments about having more green space, bike parking, things like that. And we also, I just want to point out, we have a lot of pedestrian traffic heading north and south as students go up to the university. And so, as far as it getting the business without people driving in, we feel confident that it's a good, a good fit for our neighborhood, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Levitt. Any other members of the public that would like to speak to this item? If not, was there anything further you'd like to add, Mr. Wade, to any of the comments that were made? Good, okay. All right, then I'll close it to public comment and turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion. And I guess I'll kick off by just saying, I lived in a neighborhood very similar to this maybe 20 years ago, and my favorite pizza place was just a three-block walk away, and I always walked and I never drove. So, it's a great thing to have in your neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to make a motion, but I'll just say, I mean, this, for me, is a no-brainer in terms of granting this conditional use request. And I think it's great use, really great use of the property. And again, just looking, I love the map view. I mean, you have thousands and thousands of customers, you know, within a, you know, one-block radius. So, that, I just, I have zero concerns about the parking, you know, granting the parking reduction. And I have one request, which is that you buy the Subway and Ring shop on the corner of Ninth East and Briar and do a birch and do a very similar thing there. So, that's off the record, but...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, I think this is great. I really, really, really like it.
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just want to say, I agree with the comments made. This is exciting. And fun fact, my sister and her husband lived in the units behind the Wash Hut seven years ago when they were newly married students. I think it's a good mixed-use building.
The hut.
Any other comments or motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Michael Wade's request for conditional use, approval for a reduction in required parking for a non-conforming commercial building located at 45 East 600 North and residential conservation zone in the Joaquin neighborhood. Including my motion, the recommendations included in the staff report, which I will not read at this time.
I'll second that.
All right, do we have a second to Mr. Rowan's motion?
No.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Ellsworth. All those in favor of approving item six?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, it is unanimous. Item six is approved. Right, item seven was continued, so we will continue on to item eight. And item eight is for a recommendation from the Planning Commission to municipal council. Todd Sinks requests an ordinance text amendment to Section 14.14E.0302 to remove the maximum density restriction in the campus mixed-use zone. And this would have citywide application. And Mr. Yost will read this item.
I'll turn the button on. Thank you. Thanks. As you've read, this is essentially a very simple ordinance amendment. It, I'll show you the text. We strike one line, line two, in Section 14.14E.030, striking the maximum housing density limit of 80 units per gross acre. Staff feels very comfortable with this amendment, essentially due to the fact that the physical constraints of development in this zone are very tightly controlled by the items listed in the staff report and that you can see before you on the screen here. We already control the lot area. Currently, we control density, we control the required frontage width, how much of the lot you can cover, what the setbacks are, what parts of the building can stick out beyond the setbacks, how tall it can be, how much parking you have to have, how much amenity space you have to have. So, we feel that because we're already comfortable with these geometric limits on development on the site, that if you can fit it within the box we've given you and you can park it, we're not particularly concerned whether it has 70 or 90 units per acre. And you're really not going to get much, a yield much higher than that, just based on the math, unless you start digging three stories underground for parking. So, we feel, again, we feel very comfortable in this, because the density limit doesn't really provide any additional regulation or control over the form, the feel, the design of the building than we already have in the ordinance. And if you can fit it in the box, then we're comfortable with amending the zone to allow that to be permitted.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Yost? No questions? All right. I will invite the applicant, Mr. Sinks, to speak to this item. Anything you would like to add to Mr. Yost's presentation?
Nope, I think he covered it well. I think it's all up there. So, anybody has any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Sinks? All right, thank you.
Just out of curiosity for staff, I guess, or for the applicant, I don't know who to ask this of. This is obviously coming forward as, in the context of a particular proposed project. Again, this is just my curiosity. I mean, where is your project that you would seek this text amendment?
Okay, it's basically, we're building a medical school on the East Bay golf course, and this is kind of applying for the housing for that.
I see, okay.
We do have projects in the wings that this would also benefit.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. All right, I will invite the neighborhood chair. Is there a neighborhood chair involved in this? Are any neighborhood chairs present who would like to speak to this item? Any members of the public who would like to speak to this item? All right, I will turn it back over to Planning Commissioners then. I'll just add that all of those form development regulations certainly will dictate how dense anything can be built. I mean, a lot's only a certain size. If you're required to have X amount of parking spaces per unit, you have to accommodate it on the site. If you can't go underground because it is too expensive, then you're going to have to, you know, do what works within the regulations, so I'm fine with this.
Which is exactly why we don't have a density cap or regulation on the downtown zones or the ITOD zone.
Usually, parking is what will restrict what you can do. Any other comments or motion?
We have caps on other zones, and they're applicable. They're not, the same circumstances don't apply. I think that's what you just said.
No, this only affects the campus mixed-use zone where it's applied.
You know, particularly understanding that there's a project that this is being proposed to accommodate, and maybe others as well, that it would impact. I think this is a premature discussion. I'd love to have it in the context of, this is what we're looking at. This is why it makes sense to do away with the density limit, if I can put it that way. I think it syncs up well, you know, kind of that part of the discussion with what we talked about in the study session tonight relative to policy and when we make policy and what things we consider when we're making policy and that sort of a thing. And frankly, I haven't been tremendously enamored with the projects that we've received, with the standards that we have. So, I think, you know, again, having everything in front of us when we're making a decision like this is going to be helpful. And that's not to say that I'm against the idea inherently of either changing the ceiling on density or just doing away with it, but I think it'd be great to have more information to consider before we recommend that that step be taken.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Knudsen? Did you have a comment?
I think I understand where staff's coming from, because it's the kind of problem I've addressed many times is, and this is just for the campus mixed-use zone. So, by nature, it's both commercial and residential. It's a mixed-use zone, and different uses have different parking requirements. So, if somebody wants a restaurant with housing above, unless you can park all of those uses on-site and still have the open space requirements, the setbacks, the lot coverage restrictions, and all of those other restrictions, then typically, it's kind of a moot point to have a cap on density. That's just in my experience.
I'll just add one more thing really quickly. I mean, I understand where Mr. Anderson's coming from, and though my anxiety, I think, would be actually, I think the anxiety that you're expressing and articulating, for me, I feel it more with item number nine, actually. All that is to say, I mean, I get the wanting to have a context in which to make some of these decisions, even though we know that there are multiple contexts that that decision will have consequences for, that will impact. You know, so I, you know, I get that. And maybe I'll save my reservations about item number nine for item number nine. But, all this is to say, I feel the kind of hesitancy about making decisions, some of this, about some of the stuff in the absence of a particular context.
So, you're saying you'd want to see an actual project that kind of accompanies this amendment to understand it better, to see how it would play out?
Yeah, I think it just allows us to have, I mean, I'm less concerned about number eight. I feel more comfortable there. I think for number nine, this strikes me as, again, I'll say this again then, or maybe I won't have to, because I am going to say it now. In order, you know, in a zone change, it feels to me that that's where we have the most accounted, that's where we kind of have the most informative opportunity prior to a project plan, right? In other words, to change a zone from commercial to mixed-use and from commercial to public facilities without knowing what the, kind of what the imaginings are right now, what that will look like. You know, for example, you know, is the, is the medical campus going to be an auto-centric one or a kind of pedestrian-friendly one? Are they going to have everyone driving from the apartments to the main campus? Or are they going to have people walking to the, you know, is it going to be designed a certain way? I don't want to wait until we get the, you know, project, we're at the stage of the project approval where we discover that, oh, they're actually, they've designed this in a way that everyone's going to be driving. I want to know that when I, when we approve the zone change. So, but, all this is to say, I feel the anxiety that Mr. Anderson's expressing about this, even though I don't feel it to the same, quite to the same degree about this one as I do about the next one.
Any other comments, discussion? Opinions, thoughts?
Both on this item and the ones coming up that would also benefit from this. Again, the position we put the developer in is you need to go spend a whole lot of money to find out if you're going to get this approved. And if, with both of these developers that are contemplating this need, we're saying, spend that money to come before the Planning Commissioners City Council, when they're saying, if I can't, if you're going to hold me to this density cap, my project doesn't work.
Of course.
Okay? So, you're asking me to spend a lot of money to roll the dice, when I'm telling you right now, I might as well just kill the project right now.
It is.
So, that's why this comes, is coming forward ahead of that. On both projects, you're going to see a zone change request and the plans all submitted at the same time, before you change the zoning. All those details will be given, so that you'll be able to get answers to the, all the questions Jayman answered plus asked, plus other ones. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Yeah, and again, just to echo what we talked about earlier tonight, I don't think we necessarily would need a full-blown design to kind of see why this is even being asked for, and that's something that I struggle with, is, you know what? If it's just a matter of getting more, you know, units into a project, you know, that's, to some extent, it's hard to see how that necessarily really benefits the...
Well, I'll give you an example. Not this one, but the other example is Mr. Rowan, Glenn Rowan, has been working for 15 years to get a student housing project approved adjacent to BYU campus. He's finally given up on trying to get BYU housing approval. So, he's going to do married housing. But now that it's married housing, this density cap gets in his way, because they're going to be smaller units. There'll be married couples, not four singles living together or five singles living together. So, this has affected his project and his ability to move forward on a piece of property that everyone in this room would look at, the location of that and what he's proposing, and say, this is a no-brainer. But he's in the same position where he's saying, Bill, if you're holding me to this density cap, now I don't even have a married housing project.
At 80 units to the acre.
Yep.
I mean, literally, at a density that... I mean, literally at a density that you won't see anyplace else in the valley. And it might be the most appropriate place for it, but at some point, I think there needs to be some consideration as to what, you know, a community needs to absorb relative to what it takes for a developer to realize some return that they anticipate or desire. Not that necessarily that's what I think this is about, but certain bells get really hard to unring and making changes to ordinances like this, these are the kinds of things that we get reminded then. And I appreciated Jayman's perspective on zoning. Absolutely think that's a critical line to hold before we, we, we change people's rights relative to what they can do. But, um, now, again, our position becomes, it meets, it meets these provisions, therefore it gets approved at some point. And that's my hesitance, you know, without, maybe some description, certainly something that, in my view, could be far short of a full-blown a project plan or something like that, but just something to illustrate why it's necessary and how that somehow is beneficial, you know, the bigger scheme of things.
So, we're trying not to be tone-deaf to those issues. And that's why another item on your agenda, one of the ones that has continued, are further amendments to the CMU zone so that we don't have an outcome that we've had already once in the city. We brought you an amendment on setback in that zone a year ago, and we told you then we'd bring forth other amendments to shore things up even better. So, we're trying to address some of the exact same issues I think both of you are referring to. To Deborah's comment, Ms. Jensen's comment about how much parking influences that density and that yield and those things. In the ITOD zone and the downtown zones, you have opportunities for significant parking reductions and you have no density cap. But in the campus mixed-use zone, you have no opportunity for density reductions and you have a density, no, for parking reductions. And you have a density cap.
I, I think that the example that you gave of a, a proposed building, let's just say, here's the building envelope. It's, it's 10 feet, 10 stories tall and 80 feet wide, just arbitrarily. And if it's going to be student housing with four bedrooms per unit, then the, the density is calculated by units per acre, not how many people are in those units. If, if someone wants to build instead married student housing in that same 80, you know, same building envelope, then you've changed the density because you've changed the type of dwelling unit you're building. Now, that's going to increase also the requirement for parking. So, the site's only this big. If you can't accommodate that parking on your site and make it work along with all these other restrictions that are already in place.
That sets the cap.
Then the parking's really going to drive how much you can get on that site. It always does. It's too expensive to go super deep, you know. Subterranean parking spaces are like $20,000, $25,000 a space. So, right away, that, it's prohibitive. And if you have all these other constraints already on the property, then density just really, you're just talking about, is it going to be, you know, one unit accommodates four people in four bedrooms? Or is it going to be one unit accommodates two people in a one- or two-bedroom? So, it's really getting to the unit size in the same building envelope, basically.
Seems to make sense.
So, I understand, I understand based on that why density really isn't, doesn't measure much of anything for that. The number of units is going to dictate how many parking spaces are required. And all these other design parameters are going to dictate how close the building is to the street, where the parking is, how it's landscaped, open space, all of that, so. To me, it's not a big deal, but I understand I deal with it a lot more than everyone else here does, so.
Kind of in relation to project or item nine, which is related to item eight, I'm really, like, in a broader perspective, I'm really interested in seeing this area being a gateway to our city. And it being a, a smart, tax-creating revenue-producing for the city area. I want it to be, I want it to be great. I don't want it to look the way it does now. Our other off-ramp is kind of lousy-looking. And I think that we need to have some vision and proactivity when it comes to both of our interchanges. And so, whatever we can do to create flexibility and opportunity and long-term goodness there, sorry for the, the lack of specifics. I just want those to be really strong. So, that's where I'm coming from.
Well, Madam Chair, I would be willing to make a motion.
Mr. Howard?
I move that we recommend to the Provo City Planning Council, or Provo State Council, a ordinance tax amendment to section 14.14E, point 030, paren 2, paren, to remove the maximum density restriction in the campus mixed-use zone.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Do we have a second for Mr. Howard's question? Seconded by Mr. Knudsen. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item eight to municipal council? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Okay. Did we have any abstain? Okay, so, so we will forward a positive recommendation on item number eight to municipal council. All right, item number nine is also for a recommendation to municipal council. The Provo, Provo City Economic Development Department requested general plan map amendment from commercial to public facilities for approximately 23 acres and from commercial to mixed-use for approximately 12 acres located at 178 East, 1860 South in the East Bay neighborhood. And Mr. Yost will again present this item.
Thank you. Let me begin by clarifying that this is only a general plan map amendment. This is not a rezone. This is not a project approval. Before anything is constructed on either of these parcels, the project proponents will have to return to you with a zone map amendment request and a, a concept plan with that. Both of those applications are in process and we're working through a second round of reviews on those. So, at the point at which their staff is comfortable that those projects have reached a point where we're ready to bring them to you, that we've, feel like we've gotten close enough to the aspirations that were mentioned for this area, we'll bring those to you for your review and approval. So, this current proposal involves these parcels outlined in yellow. There's actually three parcels here. The southern parcel here is the parcel that has been conveyed to the Norde Medical School for the development of their College of Osteopathic Medicine. This parcel has been procured by related interests to construct housing to primarily serve that medical school. And this parcel to the west is currently a detention basin that is part of the city's overall storm, uh, stormwater system. The project proponents here are working with the city to take a line directly south from this corner to square up this piece to enhance their development of the housing portion of the medical school campus. And so, this southern piece will be eventually the rezone that this public facilities general plan amendment will accommodate will be a zone request moving to healthcare zone, the public facilities healthcare zone. The same that is, that accommodates the hospital, the Intermountain Hospital. And the zone that will be applied for here under this mixed-use general plan designation will eventually be the campus mixed-use zone. And the project that will be constructed there will be subject to the results of the design standard amendments that we're currently working on and were on your agenda this evening. This slide shows your current configuration. The general plan was changed to commercial in this area. Well, it has been commercial in these two areas. This is currently public facilities. And up here is also commercial. I don't know why these labels got in here from our mappers, but so that you're not confused. This is like industrial, commercial, and then commercial. The current general plan has policies in it that you can see in your staff report that are, in the central area policy 19 and the East Bay neighborhood general policies six and nine essentially ask, state that 60 acres of the northwest corner of the golf course should be designated commercial. And that the possibility of relocating the East Bay golf course be considered. We recommend that those three policies as part of this part of this approval be stricken from the general plan so that we don't have conflict between the policy statements and the general plan map. As the city's administration and the council's vision and intent for this area has obviously changed from constructing a regional retail center to accommodating a medical school campus. So, the application will, approving this, or sending a, a recommendation of approval to the city council, if they approve this, it will create basically a contiguous area of public facilities with the medical school and the golf course and then create a area of mixed-use here. We changed the application of that mixed-use designation after this map was made, so it's actually not residential. It's mixed-use that will cover this, what was previously the Nature Sunshine piece and then the city detention basin facility. Staff recommends approval to you as the commission on these two items as they're in line with the, the vision and hopes for this area that have been communicated to us by the administration and the council and particularly by the conveyance of that property to the medical school. This will, is again, the first step in moving towards a zone map amendment and a concept plan approval for this area. Following the concept plan approval, due to the, the size and prominent position of these projects, they will return to you again for project plan approval as those specific final plans are brought to us for each phase of construction. Any questions?
Just about the process and I can, I'm happy to ask the applicant economic development as well. You know, what, again, some of the frustrations that I think I've experienced and the planning commissioners experienced in the past is that we don't have any input on any of those project plans until, you know, the very end. And at which point, you know, we're told, oh, it's too late, you know, this is, they've already spent all this money on getting, you know, everything in order. I want to see, I want to see the project before we hear the project plan. Because I don't want to, I don't want to face another scenario in which we get a project plan that we're really unhappy with and, and we're told, well, we, we can't, you know, they've already spent all this money. And, you know, I want to, I want to see it sooner. I, I want to make sure that this is not a, you know, that students aren't, you know, this isn't designed so that students are driving to campus.
Exactly. And that's one of our prime concerns too. And so, I think when you get it at the concept plan stage with the rezone, that these plans are not fully engineered. They're not, they don't have civil drawings. There are floor plans, elevations and site plans. And that's really the time where you have one, the discretion, if you don't like it, you just say, no, we're not giving you the zone change. And, you know, we'd like to if you can make these changes.
Okay.
So, you'll actually have two stabs at this, once at the beginning, because concept plan to say, you know, conceptually, this is just bad, if you don't like it. Or, hey, you're headed in the right direction. And at that point is really the point in the process where I think you'll be able to have the, the input without getting pushback that we're too far down the road or funds have been expended or it has to be a certain way.
Okay.
And then when we get to the project plan, if that project plan doesn't reflect what you saw in the concept plan and the what was expressed regarding that concept plan at the, at the zone change approval, then I, I think there's a lot of leeway to continue that discussion.
Okay.
I think it's also a little bit of mixing apples and oranges in that the project that the planning commission seemed to be most interested in having greater input on. No one ever said, they've already spent all this money, planning commission. What we said was, the property's already zoned. And they meet the requirements of the zone.
Yeah, maybe so.
Right.
Sorry. Yeah. Yeah, maybe it's, um,
This isn't pre-zoned property. That one was.
Yeah, so maybe we just haven't had the same process because they haven't had to have the concept plan in conjunction with the rezone application and, and, and previous ones. So, my apologies for
That's right. Oh, you're fine. This will be more like kind of what you've perhaps seen with the mix where you're getting an early look at it and then we'll take another look at it with the, with the project plan. So, hopefully it'll be a pretty iterative process as we go through.
And this could potentially be one of our study session briefings.
Yes, and, and it it can be in the study session briefing before to give you just a heads up on what you're likely to see when it comes before you. Absolutely.
That'd be great. I only had one question and it really concerns the municipal golf course. There's a lot of water. And I know that there's a floodplain in that area. Are there any concerns in advance of being able to remediate that?
There are, and that's actually what the, the majority of the engineering that has occurred are related to two aspects, and that is aligning the road in a way that works with the reconfiguring of the golf course, which, by the way, I've seen the plans and the renderings. It's going to really take it up a notch. It's going to be a lot better. And the second is the stormwater conveyance. The, they're dealing with both relocating a, a lot of that capacity and then re-engineering some of the conveyances within the site to maintain that same holding capacity and then also working with the Corps, Army Corps of Engineers to receive a no-rise certificate to ensure that they're not impacting the, the site and that their buildings will be outside of the, outside of the floodplain. We have our floodplain coordinator, Robert Mills, reviewing this project as well. And that is a prime concern of everyone on staff.
Yeah, thank you. And, and I would just comment that I don't think, given the development pattern right now in South Provo, I don't see that being a viable SC3 zone.
What pre-zone, sorry?
I don't see it being a viable SC3 zone.
A shopping center.
Yeah.
The same zone as the mall.
I mean, we have a lot of that in that area of Provo and it's struggling. Yeah. Any other questions for staff?
Did you say that the, there's potential for the golf course to be relocated or just like kind of?
No, one of the policies in the general plan recommended that the city undertake an investigation of the potential of relocating the course to accommodate more retail development. And since we're obviously now not doing that nor considering probably ever doing that based on the investment that's being put into the course, we recommend removing that text as well as the text regarding the regional commercial development out of the general plan so that we have consistency between the text and the map.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Aren't municipal golf courses kind of a losing proposition for cities?
Actually, East Bay does very well.
It does.
And it's very close to operating without subsidy.
Oh, good deal.
It's one of the most productive municipal courses.
Any other questions for staff? All right. Is there economic development here? Uh, there you are. I need to get better glasses.
Good evening, uh, planning commissioners. Could you go to the existing current general plan? So, bulldozing a portion of your golf course is never easy. And the council spent quite a bit of time doing, having conversations. Doing having conversations, meetings. The existing and Josh, you were right. This is a little bit confusing and this was done by our GAS group, but so this is proposed to be PF, but right now it is this commercial designation. And the proposal for the medical schools actually only comes down to about right through here. And as long as this was still commercial. I kept having the idea of maybe something could happen there and they didn't want that to happen. So I said, then let's not have it keep being commercial. Let's change it to be golf course or PF to be consistent with the golf course. And so part of my request this evening is actually on request by the council of let's make our golf course designation consistent with the PF zoning. In fact, this piece right here is also light industrial. Apparently, we'll come back at a later date requesting that this also be PF because this is where those three holes are being relocated out here. And so to send the right message to developers and future interested people, let's tell people that we really want this to be a golf course and therefore it should be zone PF. And this portion down here, which will not be part of the medical school, but will be part of the golf course, let's make it PF also so we don't send the wrong message to people coming in, talking to me saying, hey, it looks like it's general plan commercial. Can we do something? And the short answer will be no.
Just to clarify on that, you actually did in November, I believe. See an item that we actually did change the zoning on those areas. We did it backwards. We missed that we need that we also needed to change the general plan. So the areas that remain in city control have actually been rezoned to public facilities already. But this current general plan amendment didn't include changing the general plan designation on those two. So we've been less efficient. In getting all this done as quickly as possible, but we will eventually get everything all lined up and consistent.
Thank you. Thank you for the clarification on that, Josh. So again, to that discussion, so the general plan amendment is to be consistent with the balance of the golf course, which will remain golf course. And then to facilitate the transaction that's already taken place from Provo City. To the medical school and medical school housing developer. Again, I don't know if the planning staff wants to comment on some of the questions that were asked by one of the commissioners about proximity or a driving campus versus a walking campus. And Josh, you may be more adept to answering that, but. This housing will be for this medical school on the BRT line or the UVX line. Which has a stop right here. I'm assuming that. Medical school students will still have cars. But the ability to walk is pretty high base in being that close. And I get I get that. How you design it still makes a big difference on whether they actually walk or drive. And I would hope that people who are there to promote health and be healthy people themselves would take advantage of the ability to to walk to campus. But even at BYU, it's a little hard to get that to happen sometimes, too. But anyway. But that's the plan. And. So that will be the mixed campus use. This will be the public facility medical use zone eventually. But as Josh also pointed out, that this is for the general plan amendment only at this time. I don't have any other things to present unless you have any questions with me.
Any questions for Dixon? Thank you. All right, I will open this up to public comment. Are there any neighborhood chairs who would like to speak to this item? Are there any members of the community who would like to speak to this item? See none? We'll close this to public comment and turn it back over to the commissioners for further discussion and motion.
Well, it seems like the proposal is consistent with what we want to have happen down there and what's been conveyed. So it seems consistent.
Thanks, Mr. Howard. Any other comments?
I'm happy to make a proposal. A recommendation.
Mr. Rowan?
There's no comments. I recommend. To municipal council, approval of the proposed general plan map amendment from commercial to public facilities approximately twenty-three acres and from commercial to mixed use for approximately twelve acres located at one seventy-eight east, eighteen sixty south. And I also recommend approval of the text amendments to remove outdated general plan policies as described in staff report.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Howard. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation to municipal council on item nine?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that was unanimous. So we'll forward a positive recommendation on item nine. And our last item for the evening, item ten. And this again will be for a recommendation to municipal council. The community development department requests a general plan amendment to the downtown master plan to clarify right-of-way improvements for one hundred West Street as redevelopment takes place. And this has citywide impact and Mr. Weaver will present item ten.
Thank you. So the downtown master plan was adopted back in February of two thousand and fifteen. And now since then, we've seen a significant amount of increase of development and interest in this area of the city, particularly from one hundred south to six hundred south along the one hundred west corridor. So with this development coming in, we looked at the downtown master plan, looking at the there's a section discussing one hundred west and seeing if that fits what we want for now for the development now, or do you want to make sure it's improved and rewritten as this increase in this area comes and for future growth. So in the downtown master plan right now, it identifies this area as a pedestrian corridor connecting the Provo station to downtown, to business, the temple, et cetera, other areas along that area, as well as it identifies that the one hundred west corridor is a quieter street. It is calmer. You don't have the heavy trucks as you do in university or freedom. It's more enjoyable. And with that allows for a better pedestrian experience in connecting along this corridor. And to add in with the Provo station, there is discussion on having a pedestrian overpass or pedestrian bridge over six hundred south on the railroad tracks connecting the station to six hundred south. So there would be linkage between that and as future development happens on the Provo station area. So this has gone through a few couple meetings with with staff, with economic department, redevelopment, public works and engineering as we went over the. Cross section for what this street looked like. As you can see right here, the current street section in the downtown master plan on your left has parking on both sides, has a sidewalk and ideally initially it was to have a promenade between the two trees on the right. As discussion went forth between different departments, we came with the proposed street section on the right side. So this would be as if you're looking north, standing in the center of the street, you would have the eight-foot sidewalk and five-foot planter step on the west side of the road. There would be a bike lane, two lane in each direction for traffic, eleven-foot lanes. And then you would have something different along the street. You'd have a back end forty-five degree parking on the east side of the roadway and then the planter and then a twelve and a half foot sidewalk on the east side of the roadway. With the purposes for the back end parking, it we identify that if this is a pedestrian corridor, you're going to have. More hopefully bicycle activity along the area and people walking with the back end parking. You it actually is safer for bicyclists because when you are pulling up to a parking stall and you back into it, you would look to see if there's a bicyclist coming up that way. When you go to leave your car, you would see. It's easier to pull out going straight versus backing out. You'd be able to see bicyclists coming. We all know how difficult it can be on Center Street trying to back out along that roadway when people are not following the speed limit. Additionally, if you had. When you are loading and unloading the car, when you open the doorway, it finds you to the sidewalk, it finds your shoulder to the sidewalk versus going out into the street to go around to get in to get onto. The sidewalk area. With the larger sidewalk on the east side, the twelve and a half foot sidewalk, we were looking at this area to be to be in kind of more promenade area. We're connecting hopefully with that pedestrian bridge to have that connectivity going north. Additionally, we saw that there could be. Activity nodes at mid-block crossings along this area as well. To create pedestrian activity. We are currently working on redesigning, updating the streetscape standards that will hopefully come with the next planning commission that will coincide with this one hundred west. Section. The one one primary issue, and I hope this can maybe addressed in the future, is with the crossing at three hundred South Street on one hundred west, that is a busy five-lane inner. Street right now. And with there is a traffic light on university and two hundred west, but I do see a crucial to connect to have this connectivity, to have either a light that's similar as what we have on two hundred east and third south or a bicycle pedestrian crossing or some kind of or even a standard for intersection type crossing there to have that connectivity. If that's not there, then this pedestrian promenade will not be as. Well, it won't be. Executed the best as it could have been. The other thing is with one hundred between one hundred south and two hundred south, you have the new skin and the Provo city center, Provo city center, temple, parking garage going down underneath. That one block section of the road would have to be looked at. On a smaller scale as development comes in on how we would. Handle that specific area. The. The general plan identifies that this that the streets should reflect character for pedestrian promenades. Neighborhood streets should prioritize pedestrians, having these riders sidewalks, having the bike lanes does help promote pedestrian activity going to and from these areas. That's more pleasurable and also promotes the accessibility of accessing the transit station. The and then lastly, if you're on the text, we just looked at revising the text to reflect. Our. How this quarter can be redesigned and how there would be an increase in landscaping and other materials along this area to create that promenade, to have something that would be unique for this quarter. Like I said, this would be coming again when we read the streetscape standards are looked at in the future.
Great, thank you. Any questions for staff?
I I may have missed it, but from from Center Street to First South, what what did we say we do there?
There's no, oh, from first.
Where New Skin is.
Center Street to First South, there's no street at all. That's New Skin property on First West. What would have been First West? They bought that's that's the atrium for New Skin.
Is it open to pedestrians?
They can walk through it.
But I've never tried, so.
You can walk through there. Yes, you can.
Yeah. Interesting.
But you were saying it's complex from First South to Second South?
This would be from one hundred south to six hundred south. The section that would have to be looked at individually would be the First South to Second South because of the underground parking area.
Yeah.
I would say there we are eliminating parking on one side of the street, but when I figured out how many cars could fit on the east side of the street, we saw about thirty cars or so, depending on the length to fit back in along the area. Additionally, we had public works did a study on lung. I'm not sure where along the street exactly, but they did a traffic count to see how many cars we have along that area. And I want to say it was about two to three thousand vehicles per vehicle.
That's probably the post office in the temple.
Yes. Along that area. And surely as new development comes in, this will increase, but not significantly because the road does terminate within five blocks. At first and sixth south. So there's not going to have a lot of through traffic in this area.
I I have one question and I understand that back end diagonal parking has been used in Florida quite a bit and some other places. Some people love it. I think it confuses drivers. I haven't seen it here in Utah at all.
It's in some way. I'm sorry.
I realize you're going to yield more parking spaces, parking diagonally than parallel. But parallel, if you're trying to if you're trying to create a pedestrian environment, parallel parking with street trees. Is more of a protective barrier to pedestrians than ankle parking where someone's pulling into the curb towards the pedestrians. Do you know what I'm saying?
Understand.
Just can I just maybe to follow up on that? Yeah, so just very curious that, you know, the pros, the staff sees it versus maybe I mean spatially, you're identical, right? Parallel parking on both sides versus angled on one. And I I kind of agree with the idea that parking can provide some, you know, in addition to the spatial separation between travel lanes and pedestrians, but some kind of protection there. I know sometimes bike lanes, you put the bike lane next to the curb or you put that, you know, on the other side of of. Of parallel parking. I don't know if that's a factor. And what we're looking at, but kind of. Well, in favor maybe of the parallel parking is you get that both ways, too. So just from that convenience perspective, that's.
Because this is tied closely to the next item, which is continued, if you'd like to identify information, you'd like us to come back and continue this discussion till we have that one, we could do that.
But just for now even. Any? Anything that we can talk about tonight relative to how you view? The forty-five degree versus parallel?
Come to the microphone.
Yeah, and I would I would just add that. It's a it's a small street. It's not a major street and it's not going to have major traffic on it. So I can see some idiot, excuse me, but some idiot that's going the wrong way, pulling head into one of those spaces. It's going to happen.
I would be that idiot. I don't pack into spots.
There's a space, grab it.
So like Javon said, this is this type of parking, something that's been done in Salt Lake City on three hundred South Broadway. And they did that specifically to make it safer for bicycling. And that's because if you are riding your bicycle alongside a row of parked cars, at any moment, someone can open their door out. This is a big problem in places like New York City. People get what's called doored.
T-bound.
Yeah, doored. And so their their hands and their knuckles will bleed. They'll smash their face. I had a friend get a concussion from getting doored. And so as you're angling that, as people open their doors in their car, they're not opening them into the bike lane. So it makes it a lot safer that way. Yes, you don't get as much parking, but if you have one row of back end forty-five degree parking, you get only twenty-five percent less than if you had two rows of parallel parking.
What about the the bike lane on the other side of the parking? I mean, I understand that at the intersections, you're going to build little triangular items for the diagonal parking, but the bike lane could be straight.
So you're saying put the put the bike lane closer to the planter instead of?
Yeah.
Inboard?
I don't I don't see anything against that. That's safer.
I think you're going to have a tough transition when you have to go around that parking ramp that's going down on the middle of the street. Because I looked at the plan on the item that was continued and I don't know how you're going to sort of transition the bike route.
Oh.
Around that. It looks like it's pretty narrow.
Around the underground parking?
Yeah, around the the ramp that goes to the underground parking. It looks like that's just a standard lane there with not much.
Yeah, I would just put a share the road marker on that. I wouldn't I wouldn't try to make a bike lane there. It's not wide enough.
So on on that, we'd actually pick up the bike lane on the north side of second, but then. then after a certain distance, you'd have the dashed lines that would indicate the bike lanes transitioning into traffic, and then they would share the lane for the rest of that block. The primary reason why we were hesitant about inboard bike lanes inside of the parking is that it creates really awkward situations at intersections where the turning movements, you have to pull parking back so much from the intersection for the turning cars to be able to first see the bikes or create a bike box so the bikes can come out into the lane. So it creates a lot of lateral movement for the bikes to be protected from turning movements. And it also either prevents us from doing bulbouts, or it creates a situation where they've done with mixed success in Portland where the bike actually has to mount the bulbout in a little delineated space and cross the pedestrian space at a corner where people typically wait. And so it creates a ped-bike conflict that people really aren't used to here, and it also reduces the amount of space we could program for small activity spaces at mid-block crossings where we'd also like to do bulbouts and at the intersections. So it creates, just the amount of conflicts it creates compared to the benefits it gets us in this situation on the size of right of way we have. I was actually thinking about just canning the parking, but Austin was a little bit jealous of the parking, so we kind of came to this compromise, which may be a little unconventional, and I do think since every village needs one, Shannon probably will pull in head into these across the oncoming lane. But hopefully people will be going slow enough that.
Hopefully.
But it's, there's a lot going on, and that as we analyze the different pros and cons, it seemed like doing the one side back-end parking yielded the least awkward, considering all the users, the least awkward solution.
This way the bicycles will be able to see Shannon coming.
True, true.
Hopefully a Provo cop will give her a ticket for parking wrong.
So it sounds like you've been extraordinarily thorough in thinking through things. What was, we're having the bike lanes together around the table, either on the, you know, on the opposite side of the parking or in the middle of the street? Like you have occasionally, you know, on two hundred East where the bikes kind of come and cross intersections at the middle? Is that?
Good.
Mr. Day.
You've got us all fighting to answer. Public Works. We have, since we've been in discussions with all the city staff on this bike pedestrian corridor on First West, we've talked to UDOT because they're planning a project on Third South to west of University Avenue. So it'll be the same sort of project that you saw east. Hopefully it'll take a lot less time. But, so you'd have that same treatment at First West as you see on, or on Second East, where they bring the bikes to the center and cross.
At three hundred specifically or at most intersections?
At three hundred.
Just three hundred, okay.
And we've asked them how they felt about putting a signal there for pedestrians and bikes, and they're okay with that. But the one thing I just wanted to emphasize is however we decide to do this, it's important that we get that into our city plan so that we can say, look, UDOT, here's our plan, this is what we want you to implement, and then they would build that into the project. So we have other things going like a tiger grant for that bridge across the railroad tracks. So all of that kind of plays into developing this plan. So whatever we decide to do, it's important that we approve something so that we can continue on creating that corridor, so.
That whole corridor is ripe for redevelopment, for sure.
And that transition, you know, you get to the post office and the temple, I think that most of us just think that the people kind of disperse as we get that far in to other places. And yeah, the bike lanes wouldn't work right there where that ramp goes down, so it would have to, just like they mentioned, kind of disappear at Second South.
So what are the other kind of design solutions on the table in terms of, I mean, because that was the thing, and we've talked about it already a little bit, but, I mean, it's clear coming from, you know, it's easy to imagine people finding solutions coming from the train station. It's harder for me to imagine people finding solutions on Center Street to kind of, to know that that exists, to find pathways. Are there ideas about how you sign things or how you get, I mean, very few people, even though you can walk through New Skin, very few people would do it.
Yeah, I'd go around.
Right, so what are the, what's been the chatter about that problem?
So there has been discussion, again, with the streetscape standards to have a refinding sign at six hundred South and First West and also at about one hundred South, First West. So that way to kind of let people know as you come over that bridge, oh, I can go this direction and get to Utah County business offices or downtown up this way, et cetera, or I can go this direction and access down towards the Provo station, et cetera, and other items, places down that direction. So that way people will realize there is connectivity and you can use that route, and you can walk through the glass atrium. Even if it doesn't look like you can.
Doesn't look very inviting to do that.
Yeah, it just seems like, it seems like the solution would need to entail more than signage when you're coming front, you know, when you're traveling north to south. Wouldn't it? I mean, wouldn't you need more than, how do you get, how do you get the energy and the movement around Center Street through New Skin? That seems like a really hard problem to solve.
I think the movement is, what's going to drive that is the development that's yet to come on four hundred South and five hundred South. You already saw the project for four hundred elements at Four South and First West come in, the hundred and eight units that's gone through approval in October. There is future applications that have been put in for, I don't know what I'm allowed to say.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, a future development, large development coming on where IFA used to be, that is going to really info this. So again, we were trying to get something set before these large developments come in. Four Hundred Elements is aware that we are proposing to redesign this. They have on their site plan showing the widths as what's proposed. They're just still awaiting the final details as to what exactly.
I hope, this is a little off topic, but I hope, big picture, long-term, the city understands that although New Skin has been a successful homegrown corporate boon to Provo, they've really messed up downtown by cutting off that street because here we would have a beautiful connection, right, to the heart, right? And right to the train station, perfect, walkable, attractive, once it's redeveloped. And now we have this barrier there.
It's not just, I mean, for me, it's not, the thing that makes it even more complex of a design problem is it's not just the New Skin building, it's that whole block. I mean, you really lose.
Oh, with the ramp.
Yeah, with the ramp, the, you know, that whole, I mean, it's pleasant enough once you get closer to New Skin. And I mean, I'll keep thinking about it, it just seems that we'll have to come up with, yeah, some clever, clever ways of helping people find their way rather than just hoping that, you know, enough development will overcome, overcome that barrier, it seems to me, but.
Sounds like a good project for BYU class.
It's too bad New Skin didn't locate up by Tempe High School. Could have been great.
One thing that the text does illustrate on here does talk about how we should be aware that when there is the downtown loop top concern series, that the area on one hundred West from Center to First North is how that can be designed to promote those types of events when we do have larger events downtown. But again, with these maybe possible refinding maps, we could draw the map with little dashes going through New Skin so you know you can walk through that. I don't know too much.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know either. It just strikes me as something that we need to keep thinking about, and it doesn't pertain to this.
Right.
Particular item per se. And I mean, I really like, I mean, I love the, and I hope none of our comments have suggested that, oh, we hate, you know, the cross section that you've proposed. I mean, I think it's, I like it, I like the idea of experimenting, trying, you know, trying to do something different, seeing how it works. This seems like a relatively safe, limited space within which to do it, and it could, you know, be the, you know, thinking about kind of almost a lab where if it works here, then maybe we try other places. So I like the idea, and this seems great. I mean, I really, really love what's kind of the thinking that's going in. And again, as you've answered questions, it's clear that you've really thought through lots of different scenarios and that there's clear reasoning for why you've landed where you've landed.
To echo that, I did, this is exactly a prime example of an area where, let's try something new. Let's see how this works. It is a small section of road, it's not going to continue up the street too far, et cetera. If it doesn't work, we'll address that later. This, it's a slow traffic area, let's experiment, let's be innovative.
At the very least, it'd be very easy to switch from back-end parking to, you know, forward, and everyone's comfortable with that because of Center Street. I mean, we're all familiar with that.
Right.
That's easy enough to do. Just paint differently, is that right?
All right, good discussion.
Yeah, I just want to add one thing. Because I was once trained as a landscape architect, these medians going, or sorry, the planter strips going from six feet to five feet probably inhibit the type of tree that we can plant there. And on University, they're already very narrow planters, like two feet, and I think they planted ginkgos, which are huge. Eventually, they're huge. And, and so what we have on Center Street with this phenomenal canopy that we should someday think about, you know, the life cycle of that and how to replace those trees. I don't, I don't see that we'll get a canopy like that on any of our north-south streets if we're going for these five-foot or two-feet planters.
So, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
To address that, so we, again, with the streetscape standards, we're looking at reducing the distance between each street tree. Because we do realize with the ITOD zone and the downtown one and two, you don't have the setbacks. So we want to still have trees that can be, that can grow up and create the canopy. They may not have as wide of a diameter, but still create that canopy along those quarters with more frequent of those trees, frequency.
So not just like some kilometer pair?
No.
Okay.
So if you do like five-by-eight tree grates, that's usually if you get the eight feet in there, that'll.
And that's what we're doing, and our standard already is a five-foot tree grate in downtown, so we have a five-foot planter strip and then an eight-foot walk instead of the six and seven, or seven and six. What we've also done, and Austin actually drew all the details and developed this back for this, Austin Corey, previous Austin, not parking Austin. We actually have a ten-foot.
Not Wayne Parker.
Not Austin Powers.
Nor Wayne Parker, even though he is hopefully a Parker that can handle back-end parking here. We have a ten-foot wide structural soil trench under there, so it actually goes from the, like the lip of curb back into the sidewalk, and that trench is continual between tree grates. So we actually have a non-compacted structural medium in there that goes under the sidewalk that provides a surface volume that actually can accommodate a sycamore or a large tree. Our problem becomes the trees growing into the buildings. Like New Skin planted those sycamores, and then they have the canopy, and the sycamores are already hitting the canopy. So that's one thing we've addressed. We'd love to have another ten feet to put a planted median down the middle, but we don't, so.
And there's always the hope that New Skin might not disappear, but revamp how their campus is, and maybe that could open up one hundred bus again.
Public pressure.
The future is, is open, you know?
A tunnel, ultimate solution. Or a bridge over it, right? All right, so it's getting late, it's nine twenty-five.
I want to stay to ten, I want to stay to ten.
Not that I want to put any pressure on anyone here, but I think we've earned our keep tonight. Good discussion on item ten. Are we ready to make a motion or move this along in some way?
I'll make a motion.
Mr. Rowan?
I move that we recommend to municipal council approval of the requested general map, planned map amendment with the following conditions, that all CRC comments are satisfied, and that when development occurs along the corridor, that there will be restrictions on access to one hundred West from parcels.
Thank you, Mr. Rowan. Do we have a second for Mr. Rowan's motion on item ten? Seconded by Mr. Knitson. All those in favor of forwarding a positive recommendation on item ten to municipal council?
Aye.
Any post? All right, we will forward positive recommendation on item ten.
Madam Chair, can we get a sixty-second update on Los Hermanos and what would become of the facade of that building?
Yes.
I actually got a call from the realtor yesterday afternoon, so I felt like I was at a wedding, and, I mean, at a funeral, and the widow was walking out the door with me and turns to me and says, so how about coffee? I was like, dude, it's still smoking. So he called and said, what are the development possibilities here? I'm representing the owner. It is a landmark structure, it's a contributing building in the downtown Provo Historic District, so it is protected from demolition. The chief building official said in my presence, and I told him I would hold him very strictly to this, quote, "I'm not worried about the stability of the exterior walls," unquote. So if they wanted to, they could come and build in the box, the walls are fine. The collapsed structure is primarily in the back, and the roof is entirely gone, but it's just a roof. So it's protected in the least preservation option that we'd probably be comfortable with from a landmark's perspective is if they retain the facade and then stepped back above the existing facade if they were to go higher to mitigate the impact to this historic facade. But we don't really have any exposure to the street on the rest of the facades, they really join other buildings, so if they wanted to do something different and use the little bit of the rear property that the buildings aren't currently using, I think we could probably get comfortable with that alternative as well. But the facade, at least at the moment, we feel like the facade is safe, and there's a range of, range of options as we move forward.
Thank you. I move that we adjourn.
Seconded by Mr. Rowan, so we are adjourned. When you're having fun, it always does. Ladies can handle it, gentlemen probably couldn't. I was not happy with him at all.